Ready to get started?
All right.
We are, Chair.
I think we have a full dice here. So let's get started. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 4. Modification to a previously approved development permit and architectural insight approval for the Westport development, including but not limited to dwelling count and ground floor retail, parkland dedication fees, and minor changes to Building 1. And I'm not going to read the rest of it, but let us maybe ask staff, is there a staff report?
We'll help you fill in some of those blanks. Good evening, Chair. I have here with me John Martier, who's worked on this project from the very beginning back in 2019, and so he will make his presentation with regard to some of the history and what the applicant is requesting right now.
I think I got the right computer there. Wrong one. Let's see. Staff computer one, sorry. Thanks, Pew. John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. And yes, I will correct Pew, it was 2018 I started on this project, not 2019. So yeah, so this application has to do with modifications to Westport project, specifically the Building 1 parcel. As you read the subject, the only thing was the applicant is related California, whose representatives are here and will be doing a presentation subsequent to mine. Just to clarify some terms you'll hear during the presentation, as well as a refresher on the three different parcels and points of the project. The largest portion of the project is the townhome rowhouse portion right here, which encompasses about 88 of those units. At this point, I believe 90 to 95% of them are either sold off or occupied and waiting for final occupancy. Building 2, which is right here, is a 48-unit senior BMR building, which is again age restricted, and I believe that's been 100% occupied for almost a year now. And the subject of today's presentation and project is the Building 1 parcel right here, which is the assisted living facility, which includes memory care as well as retail on the ground floor. Okay. So a little bit of background on the Building 1 modifications. Again, City Council approved the Westport project on August 19, 2020. There were about a few modifications, smaller ones, between then and December 21, 2021. On that date, that you see right there on the second bullet, Council did approve the current programming of Building 1 in terms of the reduction of eight units on the originally approved site, the increase of memory care beds. And however, between those changes, the retail square footage of 17,000, approximately 17,000 square feet was maintained. And so what we see that current programming, these changes that are proposed now dates back to that approval on December 21, 2021. So the application request for Building 1 modification is to utilize a remaining density bonus incentive concession to reduce the amount of retail from 17,600 square feet to approximately 4,000 square feet. The prior incentive concession that was used back in 2020, or was approved to be used in 2020, was the consolidation of the BMR units into a single building, which is Building 2. The request for density bonus to increase the senior assisted living dwelling unit count by 13 units from 123 to 136. Utilize provision of state law, Assembly Bill 2097 to remove underground parking facilities, decrease of approximately 146 parking stalls for the development. Just as a refresher, Assembly, we'll talk more about this later on in the presentation, but AB 2097 prohibits cities from imposing parking minimums on projects that are within a half hour of a designated high-traffic, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get a term.
Major transit stop.
Major transit stop, thank you. Which in this case would be a bus stop with 20-minute headways. And then further minor adjustments to the proposed structure, including reducing building height, moving the sixth-floor amenities to the ground floor, and decreasing overall square footage of the proposed building from approximately 200,000 square feet to 195,000 square feet. So approximately 2% reduction in the square footage of the building. Essentially, the building will not change, at least to the naked eye. And last is to waive the application of the parkland dedication in Lufi. And I will cover each of those points as we go through the presentation. So quick analysis of the reduction in retail. So on the left, you see what has been approved as of 2021, with the whole front along Stevens Creek Boulevard being dedicated to retail on the front, on the bottom floor, with a small portion along the Mary Avenue curve going north as also being a retail spot. In the blue being amenity spaces as dining areas and offices as well. What the applicant's proposing is to reduce that retail to the 4,000 and targeting those retail spots to the corners of the entrance into Westport, Cupertino, as well as a corner of Mary Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard. So to reduce that from what was approved, or using the, one of the two allowable state density bonus, incentives and concessions. Again, incentives or concessions are basically, as it relates to density bonus, are modifications that are allowed that would financially prohibit the construction of housing units on a site. We'll do that. And so the financial reasoning, and again, the developer will get more into this in their presentation, is that if Building 1 is not constructed, may the shared cost between that building and parcel 2, the Building 2, the BMR building, would fall solely on Building 2 rather than being shared with them. The assisted unit count, which is the increase in the number of units in the Building 1. Currently, Westport Development provides 12% of its base density as affordable to very low-income households, and again, the whole Westport development. Entitles development to a 38.75 density bonus, or a total count of 329 units for the entire development. However, as currently entitled, they're only utilizing 250, they're only saying there's, they only have 259 units entitled, and with this increase to 13, they go up to 272 units. So essentially, they're allowed 38, approximately 39% of the density bonus, but they're only utilizing approximately 13% of that. So the increase would be to, again, specifically for Building 1, 123 assisted living units to 136, with no increase to the memory care portion. So that will be maintained to 35. One thing, though, so one of our standards in our BMR manual is that the affordable units should be comparable in size and bedroom count and look to the non-BMR units. And so with this increase in density on the Building 1 site, they've also reprogrammed many of those rooms to match closer with the BMR units in terms of number of bedrooms and percentages and whatnot, and that was detailed pretty specifically within the staff So the analysis of parking reduction. So again, we talked about what AB 2097 was. Staff was advised that because this, the original project entitlement came before AB 2097 was approved by the Assembly or by the Governor in January 1, 2023, I believe, that this would not apply retroactively to the site. So that being said, as it cannot apply, it's not, this cannot be done ministerially, the parking reduction, and so as AB 2097 cannot, we revise, does not apply to this modification. The Plan Commission does have discretion as to allowing the parking reduction because it's within a planned development zone, or some type of modification to conditionally approve or deny. And so what we have in this table right here, that's taken from the staff report directly is a comparison of what was previously approved in 2021 and what the applicant is proposing. So you see, at one point, the total for the Building 1 parcel was 218 parking spaces, both surface and underground. And what we have now proposed by the applicant is 73 spaces, all surface. And there we go. A couple of things to note, you know, as we've taken this modification in and the public has commented, is what happens to those spaces that have been dedicated to the BMR building as well as the townhomes, has been entitled consistently through the original approval in 2020 as well as 2021. So just to highlight this table is that those aren't proposed to be removed. The, you know, one of the requirements for when related applied, first applied was that they get sign-off from the other two developers. And part of those, we do have letters from those other two developers supporting the application, as long as the parking that was conditioned for this project is maintained on-site. So you can see, you know, the residential portion of Building 2, the 26 that were supported below grade are now going to be above grade, but still maintain the same amount, as well as the townhome 6 and 6, and as well as the retail for Building 2, 7 and 7. So one of the ways that the applicant, and again, they'll get more in detail about this in their presentation, to support their parking reduction, besides, you know, their belief that AB 2097 does apply to them, is the programming for the site. You know, the staff report details what type of clientele uses the assisted living facility. You know, one of the things they mention is that, you know, the average age of their clients are 85 years old. The memory care facility clients do not drive, they don't have a car. Visitors to the site only come in for an hour, hour and a half when they do come. And employees on-site are encouraged to utilize TDM measures and carpool and use mass transit. And with the reduction of the retail from 17,600 to 4,000, you won't have outside visitors utilizing, let's say, a restaurant or some type of retail establishment that would necessitate that much parking. And so as we see this, through this anticipated parking demand versus proposed parking supply for Building 1, what is expected, we see like a 20, still a 20-spot deficiency. And so one thing that staff has added is a condition of approval that the applicant find 20 spaces on-site prior to issuance of building permits, that they can look on-site and figure out if they have the ability to add those 20 more spaces along the surface. And we talked about, again, we talked earlier about this, how this is in a planned development, and planned development zones do give some flexibility for objective standards. So again, I'm almost done here. So now, so the architectural side approval. Again, so some of the things are changing physically of the building, and again, it's not much, increasing the footprint of the curved sickle portion of the building along Mary Avenue by eight feet, relocating memory care terrace from facing Mary Avenue to the interior of the project to overlook really the Central Green, reducing the ground floor height from 20 feet to 18 feet with incremental heights to the upper floors. So overall, the building height would be reduced to 78.6 feet, so really a one-foot reduction. And then moving that therapy pool terrace that was on the sixth floor down to the ground floor. Parkland dedication in Lufi. So the 136-unit count of Building 1 would be required to pay approximately $4 million in parking Lufi's. So, and that comes out to $30,000 per senior citizen housing development unit. The applicant today has already paid $3.6 million for those 123 units. Public Works is still conditioning the project to charge him the $30,000 for those added 13 units that they're proposing. So some of the reasons that the applicant has found for waiving the fees is that, you know, they've added pedestrian walkways that allow pedestrians to cut through the parcel, which is not required per zoning ordinance, that the program of the site, because the residents are, you know, the average age is between 70 and 80, 70 years old to 85 years old, probably wouldn't be demanding on the park space. And that within the recently adopted housing element, there is a strategy that the city would look into reducing fees like this for certain types of development. However, the city has not started to look into that, into those types of reduction of fees at this point. And so one thing, one of the recommendations from staff is that we do not support this portion of the modification, that we maintain the parking fees will have been paid and further take in the park fees, which they are required to be paid. Environmental review, this, an EIR was actually prepared for the original development per the desire of the original applicant. And so staff requested under Secret Guideline Section 15164, then addendum to the EIR, be prepared to analyze those modifications, mainly because of the reduction of the retail as well as the underground parking. And Placeworks, who had completed the addendum, found that the construction operation of the modified project would not result in any new impacts or increase of the previously identified impacts analyzed and adopted EIR. One modification to the condition in the modified development permit resolution. So here's that condition we talked about, where we said, "The applicant will work with staff to supply a further 20 parking spaces dispersed within the Building 1 parcel to accommodate employees, guests, and residents of the assisted living facility, including memory care." There was a second half of this, where we talked about anticipated, in the event that there's overflow parking and it's become a problem on Mary Avenue, or any other right-of-way within the vicinity, that the, if it's in three consecutive days, that we will require that the applicant find off-site parking and go through that process as well. In retrospect, after this has been published, staff had revisited this condition of approval and found that it's vague in how do you define sustained prolonged parking. And we said three consecutive days, but what is the impact? Is it one or two cars on Mary Avenue, or is it 30 to 40 overnight and whatnot? So we felt that, in this case, that we, I think it's best to leave the first half of this to condition a project, and if the Plan Commission wants to further discuss this with the applicant, they may, and either maintain the modification as is, agree with staff's recommendation, but that's up to the Plan Commission, and it's under your purview to condition this project as you see fit. So the recommended action is that the Plan Commission adopt the proposed draft resolution to recommend City Council adopt the first addendum to an EIR, and approve the development permit amendment, and approve the architectural site approval permit. And that concludes our presentation.
If I may, with the modification that staff presented.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Pew.
Thank you, John. Before we go further, I was negligent in not asking for ex parte communications, so let me at this time ask commissioners if we might go around the table here, other dice, and any ex parte disclosures.
Sure, yeah. I went to the location of the development, the planned development, and I met with the developer, and they showed me around and showed me the maps, and I've, I think I've had two phone conversations with them as well, where they explained the details of the proposed plans.
I have met with the developer twice. Thank you for your time. I have also visited their related property called The Allure in Santa Clara, and I have also visited the site.
Yeah, I would echo the vice chair, same ex parte disclosures. Met individually with Related at the site here, and then at their Santa Clara facility, got a tour. Thank you for that.
Yes, I had a meeting, a single meeting, with the Related team, and they have a single contact for me.
Yes, I met with the Related team over at Westport, and I also went over to The Allure and took a tour of The Allure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So with that, I would like to open it up for questions to staff, if anyone wants to go first with questions.
I had a question, related to the parking calculation. So the high number is based on residents, and that was at .5 space per resident, is that correct?
Per bedroom.
Per bedroom, okay. And then the alternate calculation that's used here, what is that based on? Is that just kind of based on the number of spots that were available in the redesign, or is it mathematically based on the?
So I believe with, in terms of our recommendation for that parking modification, we took the feedback from the applicant themselves to see what their, you know, Relay's working with Oakmont Property or Oakmont Group right now, in terms of what they see amongst their other properties in the Bay Area and whatnot. And so we figured that that's where that 20.
So this would be, you know, it's not uncommon to have a parking study. So this would be equivalent to a parking study.
Correct.
Based on, okay, comparable. Thank you very much.
So when I did the calculation of the .5, so, or studios, how many bedrooms are studios considered?
.5.
Ah, okay, yeah, because I had gotten 83, but if it's, yeah, if the studios are .5, then yeah, 80 spaces is reasonable. Thank you.
And I'm curious, on the modified condition that you just showed, the strike through, were there other alternatives that were considered by staff as opposed to striking that condition?
None at this time, and we felt that, not at this time, we felt that, you know, if the conversation could be had between the commission and the applicant, and what they could have the ability to do and whatnot. As stated in the presentation, we felt it was just too vague and subjective to what constitutes an issue.
Yeah, if I could just add as well on that, it was, I mean, that condition came out of discussion with the applicant when we were looking at alternatives. So in meetings over the last few weeks, and I think we were focused mostly on if, after the project's actually operating, and you had an issue, say, with employee parking, where you have greater control over maybe having a TDM program or some way of managing employees and using off-site parking, which would be more difficult for residents. One, we're not expecting really residents of this Building 1 to own cars. Visitors, you can't really have a TDM program for them either, or the retail portion, but residents, or excuse me, employees, you could. So I think we were looking down the road that if there were a parking issue, having off-site parking to accommodate employees would work. I think, though, at this time, we're almost trying to solve a problem we don't have yet. The problem now is like, we think we need to get additional parking on the site, which we think we've had several meetings where it's looking like that's feasible, and the applicant is receptive to that. So I think the goal for tonight was try to focus on maximizing the on-site parking to the degree we can.
Okay.
So, sorry, I did have a couple of questions. So one is, the reason, so when you do the calculation, you said we need another 19, it looks like, right? Is it a big part of that is because the retail has gotten reduced so significantly? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's part of it, too. And again, I think their own programming as to what they really need for the 136 units, based on their experience operating these facilities.
Right, but it looks like the big reduction is really coming from the drop in retail.
That is part of it, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, retail probably, sorry, would have probably needed 60 spaces based on the 17-plus, so it's gone from 60 to 16.
Right.
And the 16 is straight out of the city code.
Right.
I think the other aspects of this, we really were looking to the applicant because of the unique nature. I mean, memory care and assisted living with people with a median age over 80, this is a lot different in terms of parking demand versus a residential project, so.
Right, no, I understand that. So my second question is, the big reduction in parking requirement for staff or employees, the assumption here that's been made is that they will take transit or carpool, is that correct?
I think that's a big part of it. I also think it may help, too, to let the applicant do their presentation to explain, but largely it's based on their experience with similar facilities and the percentage of employees that take transit or are carpooling or doing something other than single-vehicle occupancy.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's apples to apples. So we looked at, you know, when they did that, it's not comparing like a facility in San Francisco, it's comparing to a suburban facility with suburban-style transit availability. And so then, yeah, my follow-up question is, and I can wait to hear the answer when the presentation, the developer makes the presentation, but that's, I know transit in Cupertino, it's not great, as we all know, right? So I guess, did you guys talk about TDM at all, or, you know, is that something that was explored at all?
You know, not in great detail, but that's something I think that needs to be looked at in a more suburban environment. I know the operator has a San Francisco facility, they have Santa Clara facility, I believe, a Sunnyvale and a San Jose. So three of those four probably are comparable. And, you know, I totally agree that while this is within a half-mile of a major transit stop, we all sort of know Cupertino and most of western Santa Clara County, not a lot of people ride transit in reality, but I think, given the operator's experience with this and familiarity, that they're probably going to have a much higher ridership, knowing exactly what that's going to be, that's probably difficult to determine with real precision.
Vice Chair.
So question on the density bonus incentive. Is this, is this one that is very specific to reduce the retail to a given square footage, or is there a conversation around the square footage there? What will constitute the concession specifically?
Sure. So this parcel is governed by the Heart of the City specific plan, which states that 75% of square footage that faces Stevens Creek Boulevard should be active retail. You know, one of the, one of the applications that was applied for, it was approved in 2020, was a Heart of the City exception, which meant that they could, they had altern, they, the council allowed them to have less retail along Stevens Creek Boulevard. And the alternative that they, the original application was approved for was that, was to put some retail on Mary Avenue to make up for the loss of retail along Stevens Creek Boulevard. As you remember, this was the Oak Shopping Center, which, the history of it was people have been trying to redevelop it for 30 years, and finally, this came along, and, you know, long story short, this happened. This was approved, I should say, not happened. And so the modification in 2021 explored that reduction of retail as well, but the applicant at that time said, "Okay, I think, we think we can make it work, we'll just, you know, we'll revise some of the square footage along the Mary Avenue sign and maintain the, that retail footage on Stevens Creek." In this case, the applicant decided not to go through the Heart of the City exception and decided to use one of their two remaining, there was their one remaining, thank you, one remaining incentive concession to reduce that retail square footage. And essentially, they could, they could use that concession to get rid of it completely. I mean, that's, that's what density bonus allows them to do.
And on that note, was there a consideration for whether we would need to redo the Heart of the City exception, given the percentage of retail square footage is reduced since the 2021 exception was made?
No, because this is, it's a reduction in a certain standard, so there would be no need for the Heart of the City exception. They could have come in using an incentive concession or even a waiver originally to not have retail at all. The original applicant felt that they wanted to go through the exception process rather than use, utilize a density bonus waivers or concessions for the reduction of retail at that time.
And does staff have other metrics on parking demand from comparable Cupertino assisted living facilities? Do we have comparables in Cupertino, and would staff have any data on that?
I have no data on comparables.
Other questions?
Oh, okay, I have a question on Table 3. Where the, what's approved now is 80 spaces based on the number of bedrooms. The developer proposed three. Where did the 14 come from that's expected? Is that from staff?
That's from the operator.
So, so three are proposed and 14 are expected?
Right, so if I may, you know, we kind of looked to this being a planned development zoning district, and we wanted to have those questions answered for, you know, what do you really expect your, you know, demand to be? And they provided us with that data after they had first applied, which is why you see Table 3, which kind of compares what they had originally proposed with what they anticipate. And like the staff report reports, we had the discussion with the developer, and they were open to the idea of accommodating more surface parking where they could, and that's where this kind of came about from.
So if I read this, they expect? So if I read this, they expect fourteen of the hundred and thirty-six residents to have vehicles?
Well, they expect seventeen. So they, so they're proposing three, they expect four, fourteen. So seventeen altogether. So they're, what they're saying is that they're, even with their own proposal currently, that they're actually deficient from what their comparable programming says. So that's, that's where we get the nineteen, and then we conditioned to have twenty more spaces on the surface.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and in the TDM determination, did staff make a distinction between residents that drive versus residents that own cars, but don't want to get rid of their cars? As in they still have a car that needs a spot?
Are you referring to the, the added condition that we're, the park, the park condition that we're taking out?
The one thirty-six assisted living occupants. Uh, was there any consideration of how many would have cars, even if they're not currently driving, they still have a car that needs a spot?
Uh, staff did not do an independent study on.
Okay. Okay. Very good. So I'd like to pause questions for now and go to the applicant, and we can come back to staff with questions, just in the interest of keeping us moving here. So, uh, if the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Great. Thank you. If you guys don't mind pulling up the presentation. Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners, staff, as well as the public. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to brief you on the, the changes for the Westport, uh, project. My name is Ballen Simsek. I'm a, a senior vice president with the related companies. Um, and before I guess.
The slides are not visible on Zoom for remote participants. Is there a way we can share the slides on Zoom?
Video team, can you please confirm with Lindsay that the slides are visible on Zoom? Chair, if you would, just give us a minute.
Thank you.
One moment.
Okay. Thank you. And if you could go to the next slide, please. Uh, before I get started, um, in the specifics on the actual project changes, I just wanted to briefly introduce the related companies. Related is one of the largest privately held real estate development companies in the country. Um, it's been operating for almost six decades, uh, four, four decades of which in, in California. And the company started with a focus on affordable housing primarily. Um, it has delivered over fifty-five thousand affordable housing units, um, nationally and including thirteen thousand in California. Um, the one other piece I would mention is that, um, we are a long-term owner of, of our properties. And so many of the properties that we've built, uh, we've owned for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. We don't typically uh, build and sell projects like some other developers. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just not the, um, not the process that we follow. And I think that's important, relevant just because, um, once this project is built, we'll be members of this community for, for the, for the long duration. And so whatever we're proposing here, we obviously understand that we have to live with, uh, with those things and, and they have to be, uh, sustainable and workable for, uh, for the development as, as well as for the community. Um, next slide, please. So, um, I won't belabor the original entitlement. Uh, John did a great job going through, um, what's transpired, but, um, we spent the last three years trying to get this project financed unsuccessfully. Uh, as you can imagine, related has a quite expansive rolodex of capital, uh, markets, partners, uh, whether they're debt providers or equity providers. And unfortunately, the, the current situation, um, economically does not support this project. And so we all, everybody in this room, I think, understands and has experienced the unprecedented amount of inflation, um, that has transpired over the last four years. And all those increases in costs have, have not, um, have also affected, uh, development. And so construction costs are up forty percent since twenty twenty. Um, those are not my numbers, but rather, uh, the California Construction Cost Index, which I welcome everyone to look at. Um, and just by way of example, uh, you know, a hundred million dollar project that we would have built in twenty twenty today costs a hundred forty million dollars. Um, so that's the magnitude of the impact, uh, that we're seeing in the, in the market. Similarly, operating expenses are up twenty to thirty percent. That's across a bunch of different line items, including labor, insurance, um, food, utilities, et cetera. Um, interest rates have gone from zero percent to five percent. Today they're hovering somewhere around four point three percent, which also, um, has a real impact on our ability to get financing and the cost of that financing. And then lastly, um, the valuations for commercial real estate generally have decreased by ten to fifteen percent based on the amount of increases in interest rates. So all that together has led us to a point where, um, unfortunately, the, the project is designed is not feasible. Um, next slide, please. So we, we've spent the last, um, year or so, uh, since we've, um, initially submitted this application, um, looking with our design team and with our operating partner, who you'll hear from here momentarily, um, looking at how do we make this, this project feasible? And the unequivocal conclusion was that we needed a pretty significant cost reduction to make this project go forward. And so again, John went through most of this, but I'll just quickly cover the, the ask. Um, adding the thirteen RENA qualified units, uh, while we're reducing the height and the bulk, and I'll get into that a little bit more. Um, the elimination of fifty thousand square feet of underground parking at roughly two hundred to three hundred dollars a square foot. That's, uh, an impact financially of about ten to fifteen million dollars. So it's very significant. Um, a reduction of retail to four thousand square feet, which is primarily, uh, based on an interest to reduce costs, um, make space for other uses and align the, the reduction in overall parking scheme for the site. And then lastly, we're asking for the elimination of four million dollars of park fees, uh, based on the fact that we're actually providing a twelve thousand square foot public park, um, onsite that related will, uh, will operate and maintain in perpetuity. And, um, as was mentioned previously, our, our residents are typically aged in the eighty-five, um, you know, eighty-five year old range, and most of them have some kind of acuity where they need help with daily activities. So the, the, the amount of wear and tear that they pose on public parks and public facilities is actually quite, quite de minimis. Next slide, please. So all, all of these, um, requests and, and within the proposal are based on a state-recognized need to provide additional housing. Um, the unit count increase and the retail reduction, as John described, is based on, uh, the concession under state density bonus law. The parking reduction is based on AB twenty ninety-seven, which explicitly prohibits cities from imposing minimum parking requirements on development projects within half mile of major public transit. I think the city staff, the city attorney has every, everybody has reviewed and agrees that, um, whatever the positions are on, uh, mass transportation in Cupertino, that in fact, the VTA bus routes, number twenty-three and rapid, uh, bus route number five twenty-three actually qualify for this, what's deemed major public transit by the code. Um, and I would note that, uh, we understand the city's position is that AB twenty ninety-seven does not apply actually for this project. We vehemently disagree with that position. Um, some of you have received letters from the Housing Action Coalition on our behalf and YIMBY Law on our behalf. Um, and they are very supportive of our interpretation of the law, and we think it's crystal clear. Um, that the city's position on this is not legally defensible. Um, that being said, we're here to come to a compromise and find a solution forward so that this project can get built. Um, the park fee reduction, uh, is based upon the HCD approved housing element that the city, uh, submitted to the state, which expressly requires the city to explore a reduction, a reduction in park fees as a method to make housing more affordable. If, if you were to think about a project that would, where it would make sense to reduce park fees, I challenge you to come up with a better project than this one. We're providing a public park, a twelve thousand square foot public park, and our residents are, are the types of residents who, because of their acuity level, will, will, will pose very little wear and tear on the public park infrastructure. So if, if, if the, the city's, um, commitment through the housing element was made in earnest, then I, I encourage you guys to, to consider that. Next slide, please. I'll, I'll move through this pretty quickly because I think, um, John did a great job. The, the, um, this is the, an elevation of the setbacks, and you can see on the right-hand side is the proposed plan. We have increased the setbacks on the level six, uh, area of the building. You can also see the parking garage. She was eliminated. Um, next slide. So the elimination of the basement floor, and I, I know that the parking is, is probably the biggest concern to residents, um, and the planning commission, and, and my colleague, Matt Stevenson from Oakmont will talk to that in great detail. Uh, I did want to note that the, the part of the reason why, um, we're reducing, um, so much of the retail is because, as noted here, this is on the left-hand side, this is the, uh, diagram of the below grade parking that we're proposing to delete. And what's highlighted in blue is about eighty-two hundred square feet of back of house space that, which includes mechanical, electrical plumbing, um, and staff facilities. That needs to find a, a place to live upstairs on the ground floor. So we've moved that eighty-two hundred square feet upstairs. Um, and, and so that, that's part of the reason the retail reduction, um, is necessitated. Um, I, I did want to know and just comment on something John said, which I think is vitally important. Uh, we are not proposing to change any of the commitment we've made to the BMR building nor the townhomes. So we will provide thirty-nine parking stalls for those residents. We have no intention, um, to change that. And there's nothing in the proposal to suggest that we're not, um, meaning to follow through with that commitment. Next slide, please. This is, uh, some diagrams that I'm not sure everyone has seen, but, um, these are from a reciprocal easement agreement that are signed between the various, uh, parcel owners in, within Westport. Um, and, and within this diagram, parcel A, uh, is denoted with an A, um, and belongs to the townhomes. Parcel B is for the assisted living, our building, and parcel C is the independent living, uh, below market rate building. And so the temporary parking solution, um, that, that is within REAs to, is to command or provide those twenty-six stalls, um, for the senior independent living, uh, parcel on the north-south road until our building gets built. And, and on the right-hand side, you can see the plan for the full thirty-nine stalls that we're providing, uh, for the townhomes as well as for the independent living building. Next slide, please. Again, uh, this is the, the ground floor plan. On the left-hand side is the current plan. On the right-hand side is the proposed plan. You can see what's denoted in dark blue is the back of house space as well as the mechanical, electrical plumbing. That's now come upstairs. And so you can see that, that shade has grown substantially from the initial plan. Similarly, the amenities which are designated by the orange shade, that has also grown as we've brought some uses from the level six amenity deck downstairs to the ground floor. And so what you're left with on the retail side is, is a reduction to four thousand square feet, which we, based on community feedback oriented, um, along the, the most prominent corners of the, of the building. Um, and so we don't know who these tenants will be yet, but I can assure you, if you looked at our other developments, we take great care to identify good retail tenants and bring them in and help them build, um, a business within our, uh, within our buildings and really, uh, try to create a sense of, um, a sense of place for folks to enjoy, uh, retail amenities. Next slide, please. So this is the, um, this is, this is, uh, relatively new. Um, you know, in conversations with city staff, we understand, city staff, the, the Westport seniors building, um, and age-friendly Cupertino, everybody that we've reached out to, parking seems to be the number one issue. And I do, uh, want to clarify, um, just some of the language that was used earlier. The eighteen stalls that we were proposing in the original plan, we fully, uh, think and believe based on precedent at other buildings, we can run this building based on that, on that parking count. And again, my colleague will, will step up and, and walk through that, um, in, in great detail. The proposal to add twenty stalls was to accommodate the concern from the city, um, and, and other stakeholders that we don't have enough parking. And so obviously the addition of parking on the site, um, and an increase by additional twenty units, which would take us from eighteen to, to, you know, thirty-eight, which is roughly doubling the amount of, of parking that's available for the assisted living building. We welcome that change and, and some of the policies that we would have enabled, um, on the site, like residents would not be allowed to park onsite. Now we can loosen those policies up and really, um, you know, accommodate more folks parking onsite. But I just want to be clear that, that we fully, uh, think that we could run this building under the original proposal that's in front of you, uh, with eighteen stalls for the assisted living building. Next slide, please. And then, um, just to further go back to the, to the, to the park fee, um, there is a code, uh, section which allows for a parkland dedication of seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet in lieu of paying the fee. Our project is actually providing twenty-seven thousand square feet of outdoor open space. Um, admittedly, only twelve thousand two hundred fifty square feet of that is public park. Nevertheless, um, even that public park is roughly seventy percent of the parkland dedication exemption. And then again, our residents will be, you know, average age of eighty-three to eighty-five years old. Um, and Matt will get into the specifics of the type of acuity that, that they typically see in these buildings, but they will pose very little wear and tear on these buildings. So we, we'd ask the, the commissioners to consider, um, this movement in, in alignment with the housing element that was approved by HCD. Um, next slide, please. And with that, I'll, uh, turn it over to Matt Stevenson, um, who's, uh, chief operating officer at Oakmont Management Group. Um, and he'll talk a little bit about assisted living operations and the parking operations in detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ballen. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Vice Chair, and good evening to, uh, members of the planning commission. As Ballen said, my name is Matt Stevenson. I'm the chief operating officer at Oakmont Senior Living. Um, we are glad you were able to tour the Allure community in Santa Clara. We also operate that, uh, with our partners related, and we fully intend to operate, uh, this great Cupertino project, uh, should we be able to, to, to build it. A little bit about Oakmont Senior Living. Oakmont Senior Living has two decades of, of, uh, operating experience, operating assisted living and memory care communities. We have today over one hundred communities that we operate in the state of California. And so today, we have the great privilege to serve over ten thousand seniors in the state. We employ over eighty-five hundred team members in the state of California, and we've built our operating platform on the core tenants of service, of wellness, um, of community stewardship and of operating excellence. And we fully intend, um, if given an opportunity, to, to do the same here in Cupertino. Next slide, please. A little bit about where we serve and the senior housing continuum. This has been covered a bit, so I'll be brief on this, but the senior, senior housing is a loosely used term, which is used to cover the full spectrum today, which would include age restricted, fifty-five plus, residential all the way through skilled nursing and residential hospice care. We typically operate and serve seniors that have a residential need and care need kind of right in the middle in assisted living and memory care. Um, and what has been covered today, um, is really accurate in that our average age of our resident across our ten thousand seniors that we care for is about eighty-five years old. Um, most of our residents come in at the higher end of the acuity spectrum and need assistance with multiple activities of daily living, bathing, dressing, grooming, personal hygiene, ambu- ambulation assistance, feeding assistance. And so, um, we, especially in memory care, uh, we don't anticipate or expect that our residents really ever have a need to leave our communities. Um, the same applies for assisted living as our communities are highly amenitized, most have multiple dining venues, have wellness centers that welcome and invite local wellness and healthcare options into our communities to serve our residents and accommodate them at their place of, of residence. And so with that, very few of our residents actually, uh, have the ability to drive a vehicle or the need to drive a vehicle. And I'll touch on that a little bit more here in just a moment. But this building will be licensed as a residential care facility for the elderly, and that license and that regulation comes from the California Department of Social, Social Service. And with that, there's great regulatory scrutiny on what we do in our communities and the care that we must provide, given the acuity of our resident. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And so I'm sure most of you are aware that we have a pending senior housing crisis and not just at the local level, but at the state and the federal level. And there is a demographic tailwind and expected growth here in the next decade that is concerning, given the nation's lack of infrastructure to support the need. And that Cupertino is certainly not insulated from this. And as you can see on the slide here, if you look at the US, the total population 75-plus is approximately 25 million. Right now, we have congregate senior housing, assisted living, memory care units of approximately 1.2 million, so less than 5% congregate housing to support today's 75-plus population. And so that population is expected to just about double in the next 10 to 15 years at a time when there are very few, if any, new senior housing development startups. And so as you can see here in Cupertino, the numbers here lag both the nation and the Bay Area counties. And right now, 75-plus populations, over 12,000, with only about 300 units of assisted living and memory care in Cupertino. There are actually only three communities in Cupertino today that provide assisted living and memory care. And of those, one was built over 50 years ago, one over 30 years ago, and then one here in the last few years. And so there is certainly a need for senior housing product today and that need will only get greater here in the years ahead. Next slide, please. So why am I standing here as the operator to talk about parking? And I wanted to let everybody know that we have been engaged with the related development team for some time now, guiding them on what we think we would need to successfully operate this community in ways that are not disruptive to the local community members, but are also seamless for our residents, our team members and our visitors. And so the numbers that you see on the slide, I just want to briefly talk through. When we think about parking, we, again, being the operator, we segment it into three primary groups: residents, team members and visitors. And as I've explained here and that you've heard, our residents, quite frankly, just don't drive. Across our portfolio, again, 100 communities in the state, we see less than 10% of our residents have a vehicle parked on site. A great question was asked earlier, how many though actually drive that vehicle? It's less than 3%. So of the 10,000 seniors we have across the state, less than 300 of them actually get in and drive the vehicle. Where we have space to park their vehicle, though, we invite that because it gives our seniors the continued sense of independence. When they're losing a lot, they can keep something. But we have many communities that we operate that don't have parking available for that. And so we have policy that governs the restriction needed there. And so we don't allow residents to park their vehicle on site, or we have a limited number of stalls available for resident vehicle parking. What we've, so we don't anticipate more than 3% of residents would actually utilize their vehicle at this community. And so what we've done is we've pre-negotiated off-site parking agreements with four Oakmont communities that we have within a 10-mile radius of this site. And each four of those communities have ample space to help park resident vehicles. Should we have residents that want to maintain vehicle ownership, we could still afford them that opportunity. We have made arrangements using policy and procedure that we've done across the portfolio to shuttle their cars in as needed and they schedule that service through the concierge. So there's a real scenario here where the residents of this community will have no resident vehicles parked on site and that won't prove to be problematic. The second primary group would be our team members, our employees. And we, I heard the comments about some of the concern about the public transit here in Cupertino. We, doing our diligence, thought the access was unprecedented, just in that there's six to 10 bus stops within a quarter mile. As you kind of stretch the quarter mile to half a mile, you get to the 10. And we just don't see that type of public transit access at many of our communities, save a few in downtown San Francisco. And so given the access to public transit, we have a high confidence that we can invite and encourage our employees to utilize public transit. We do it today at many of our communities through vouchers, through subsidies and through pay incentives. Our employee is highly motivated by pay incentives if they have an opportunity to take public transit or actively commute on, say, a bicycle or an electric motor scooter or an electric bicycle to get to our communities. And where we've needed to make those efforts, those efforts have worked very well. We have seven communities within about a 15-mile radius, six of them in San Jose. And when we pulled the ridership numbers on public transit, it ranges anywhere from 40% to as high as 75%. And these are in like suburban markets. That is largely, though, driven by incentive that's being offered proactively from us, the operator, with support from our developer. And so we fully expect that we'd be able to replicate that here, given the cycling infrastructure that Cupertino has and the access to public transit. And then the third primary group is the visitors. And we have a great data set in regards to visitor access. And maybe we could just flip to that slide if you don't mind. It might be, go to the next one if you, one more. There you go. And so what I did here is we polled using our visitor logs, and many of our communities actually have digital visitor logs, so the pulling of this data was somewhat easy. We pulled visitor logs and so what you'll see here is on a typical RCFE-licensed 100, 175-unit community, we typically see 10 to 15 unique visits a day, Monday through Thursday. On Friday, that usually increases, especially in the afternoon. And then Saturday, Sunday is where we carry the heaviest load and we see up to 20 to 30 unique visits a day in peak times. And then I further broke it out so you can see the times that these visits are coming. And so as you'd expect, it's meal times. So lunchtime, we get a large portion, 20%. Dinner time is the largest portion at 30%. And then in the evenings after dinner, when family members are getting off of work, is where we see 10%. The remaining visits are spread across the different hours. And so if you look at this percentage in pooling and look at the unique visits a day, we expect that we'll have at any given time five, four to six visiting vehicles. And so the plan to manage that load and lift is we intend to have seven-day-a-week valet coverage that will park visitor cars as they come in, which will help just manage the flow so that the visitors can get in and out more efficiently and take less of a load on the parking infrastructure. It was said earlier, but our visitors typically stay for 90 minutes or less. They're in and out pretty quickly. And those who do stay longer than 90 minutes, it's usually on holidays, which we would arrange off-site parking for any large events or holidays with neighboring commercial businesses. If you can go back two slides, I'm just about done, I promise. What I have here is a picture of one of the communities that we have here in Northern California. And this shows just how empty the resident parking lot currently is. And this is a younger demographic, a very high-functioning resident. But even with a higher-functioning, low-acuity resident, you can see that parking utilization is very low, 8% to be exact. And so there's a number of resident parking spaces that are left unused constantly. And again, of these cars parked in these spaces, very few of these are actually utilized. Next slide. And I don't need to talk about the transit system, I think. You're all very aware of what transit options are here local, but this map just shows what gave us a lot of confidence and our residents with the right incentive, being motivated to use public transit to keep the load off the local on-site parking. If you can skip two ahead, I think that's, and that's all from me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Very quickly, just a couple renderings for the commission and also for the public. This is, you know, related pride itself on creating really beautiful buildings for our communities. And I think everyone will see that we have the same intention here and have put a lot of effort into creating a really beautiful building that aligns and speaks kind of the same architectural language as the rest of the Westport community. Next slide, please. This is Stevens Creek frontage. Next slide. And then just last slide before we get into questions, this is a retail rendering of the 1,000-square-foot retail space that will be on, that we're proposing to be on Mary Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard. Again, you just get a sense for the type and quality of the buildings that we build and the spaces that we create. So that's the end of the presentation. Thank you very much for the time and for the opportunity and we welcome any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd love to open it up for questions, but thank you for a great presentation. Maybe I'll kick it off with one question real quick. The savings that you showed on retail, does that factor in the NOI that the retail generates? And can you comment on what sort of NOI might offset some of those savings and what the net savings after NOI is?
Sure. Yeah, so the numbers that we threw out were, you know, $400 to $500 a square foot of cost, hard costs. That doesn't include any kind of soft costs that's required. And it did not take that into account. So certainly, the, you know, the, a good retail center, when it's leased, does obviously generate income. I can tell you that we own a great deal of buildings up and down California. And many of them still today are very much struggling with our retail positions. It's very often that the deals that tenants are able to strike in this environment, that's not necessarily just post-pandemic, but even prior to the pandemic, is one where landlords often put a great deal of sum of money into these deals. And earlier I mentioned that we support tenants that typically come into our facilities. And so usually there's a great amount of investment in these projects. And we really look at it as an amenity for the building, not really as a revenue driver for the operations. So there is some revenue. We don't think that it's sufficient to cover the additional costs. But I would say also that that's one of the factors that's creating the issue with the retail is the cost implications. There are other factors, namely the relocation of space from the basement that needs to go upstairs, that limits our ability to provide additional retail, as well as the reduction in parking, which doesn't accommodate such an expansive retail footprint.
Thank you. And on that same note, would you view the retail as a revenue generator at a certain square footage? I understand your comment about being an amenity to the building, but given the history of this site as a 71,000-square-foot shopping center and the fact that residents west of, you know, Stelling or Bub have no other retail in the city today, this was the last remaining. So do you see this as a potential revenue generator at a certain square footage of retail when the dynamic changes there?
I mean, look, we understand the predicament that the city finds itself in, right? And I think, you know, as was pointed out earlier, the intention when this project was entitled was that we thought we could build this project with 17,000 square feet. Back then, it was very much an important piece for the community, for the city council, the planning commission. And it's not that we're back here trying to re-trade the deal, right? And we made that deal knowing that we're not going to follow through with it. We spent the last three years trying to figure out how to get this deal financed. I think, you know, folks often lose sight of the fact that there's probably nobody in this room more than the developer that wants to see this project move forward, right? We've invested a tremendous amount of money to date and it doesn't do us any favors to let the project sit like this for three years. You can imagine the impact that has on an investment profile. So we are, you know, coming to the planning commission and city council with a history of having gone out to the markets to try to get this project financed and move forward to deliver important housing for the city of Cupertino. And we've been unsuccessful in being able to do that. We're one of the largest, you know, developers in the country, so we have great experience doing that, but we can't overcome the economic realities of where the project is financially. And so we're making an effort to provide the 4,000-square-feet of retail because we know it is important. And I do think that it will do well within the project. Unfortunately, we can't accommodate additional retail for all the reasons that we've outlined previously.
And were there alternatives to where you would place the mechanical equipment that would allow for that retail square footage to expand somewhat?
Look, the mechanical, electrical plumbing, we fully designed the project previously, right? So it went through building permit. We had a fully designed set of construction documents that was vetted by engineers and signed off. So we feel fairly confident that the, you know, the uses that we've designated on that floor are accurate. But just putting that aside, the other constraints within the building in terms of the amount of parking that we have on site and those other uses coming downstairs, not just the mechanical, electrical plumbing, really preclude our ability to add additional retail space.
And one final question before I hand over to my fellow commissioners here. The dining hall is private. Is there any plan to have a portion of that for the public as a bistro? Like you were kind enough to show us on your tour of the Santa Clara facility.
Yeah, so the dining facility per Department of Social Services has to be private and Matt can certainly speak more to that. What we intend is for one of the retail locations to be a bistro. And the location that we've identified is the 1,000-square-foot retail footprint on Mary and Stevens Creek Boulevard. That has some outdoor space fronting Mary Avenue. And that, our intention is to build that into a functional bistro and identify a third-party tenant to come in and utilize that space.
Thank you. I'd like to see if my fellow commissioners have questions.
So, hi, Val. How are you?
Good. Thank you. How are you?
Couple of questions. So one is, have you considered, instead of splitting the retail into two opposite areas, right, which doesn't really lend itself to placemaking? And we already have a retail in building two. Have you considered putting, clustering all of the retail together near the park that you are building, the green, so that it, there is a little bit more of an effort to do placemaking and which would help the retail rather than being split up, right? It's a lot easier to rent retail when they're next to each other?
Yeah, thank you for that comment. We've, look, we spent a lot of time talking to the community members and working with our design team to identify, you know, the locations which we think are ideal based on that feedback. And, you know, we certainly think that the sort of activating the two corners of the building is important for, you know, for, both for the city as folks are driving down Stevens Creek Boulevard and also for residents, students and residents that are crossing over Stevens Creek from DeAnza, to have sort of a landing point across the street. All that being said, I think, I think the point that you raise is an interesting point. And I think, you know, we would certainly welcome some exploration if that was a, an important discussion that the commissioners wanted to have around what that might look like. I think, you know, we need to go through the process of assuming that there's an approval for the project at city council, of actually designing the spaces and, you know, going through the mechanical, electrical, updating that and all those pieces. And if during that time, the discussion and the feedback from the communities, no, we want retail on the public park, I think that's something that we could accommodate. The challenge is really focused on the amount of retail that we're able to provide. And I think on that front, we have very little ability to move, unfortunately. Where that retail is located, I think we're much more open to consider.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful. Speaking, going back to the amount of retail, I know you've brought up the question of parking a few times, right? But you're not bound by parking minimums, as we know, right? Because you're within a half-mile of a major transit. So would you be, would you be open to putting in retail if you didn't have to add commensurate parking to it?
Look, I appreciate that point of view. I think we certainly feel that we are not bound, given AB 2097. That's not the feedback. Your position is not consistent with the city, but I certainly appreciate you saying that. The- The, you know, the, the, the issue with the retail is not just the parking. It's, it's, there's three components to, that are driving that retail reduction. One is the cost, which we've talked about. One is the actual space in the, in the ground floor of the building. When we're moving up that 8,200 square feet of below grade back of house space and mechanical electrical plumbing, that needs to find a home. And, and then lastly, the, the, the reallocation of space from the, the level six floor downstairs. And so all that brought together results in basically a balance of 4,000, roughly 4,000 square feet of space that we feel we're able to, you know, contribute in the form of retail.
One last question. To go back to the, the dining room. So in the initial plans, it was a public dining room, right? And, and now it's not, it's private. And, and you said that's a requirement, but why wasn't it a requirement in the first plans then? Like what changed there?
Yeah, I, I don't think actually anything changed that the, and I do recall that when, when KT Urban brought that, you know, that, that package in front of planning commission, it, it, you know, I can't comment as to why that commitment was made. And, and I would ask Matt, maybe you can speak just briefly about the requirement for DSS, from DSS to, to control access into the building and, and really talk about why it is that the, you know, the dining component can't be open to the public.
Given that the, the Department of Social Services recognizes these communities as a residential care facility for the elderly, they classify and qualify that as clearly as the residence home. And with that, there are areas that we need to provide that are safe and free from the public without some level of security. And so one of those spaces is the resident dining room. We need to have a designated dining space that is for exclusive use of the residents and the residents invited guests. And that area is protected from the public. Anybody that would be able to access that dining room would have to go through the concierge and go through a screening process.
Questions from other commissioners? I'd like to use the time. You mentioned the, the plan currently has staff quarters on the ground floor. You also have the admin office on the ground floor and the wellness pool on the ground floor and the dining on the ground floor. All of these are on your first floor or upper floors, I believe, in most cases in the Santa Clara facility that I saw. At least the dining was in the upper floor and the wellness in the pool was on the top floor, I believe. So I'm curious if there are design options that would permit that flexibility to give the community some retail back. And I'm also, as a follow-up question, curious how or where you got the impression that the number one problem was parking and why you thought retail was not the number one?
Yeah, sure. Maybe, maybe I could answer that, that question first, and then I'll, I'll follow up with the other one. We, we've done some pretty extensive community outreach. You know, we've obviously met with the planning commissioners. We've met with most of the city council members. We've met with H Friendly Cupertino. We met with the Westport community, both in the townhomes and the BMR building. And the predominant issue that has been brought to our attention is really focused around the parking and the inadequacy of parking in Cupertino in general, this location in particular. So that's, that's been the, that's been the, the primary point of conversation that we've had with stakeholders in the community. That, that, to your previous question, look, every building is different. The, the, the site, right, informs how the building is built. The building in Cupertino or in, in Santa Clara is a much tighter footprint, which requires us to go much higher vertically. That's also a 20-story building. And so, you know, the, the buildings are not apples to apples. Every site is different and is informed by the local, you know, not only the local ordinances, but the local geography and, and sort of around the space. The, the, you know, the, the specific question you asked about could we move those things upstairs? The, the biggest issue that we have is cost. And so if we just entertain that comment, if we were to take those uses and move them upstairs, we would be adding tremendous amount of cost to this project in the form of additional square footage. Not only would we reintroduce retail, which would be heavily underparked, we would also be building a, potentially a seventh floor to add additional space. And, and so along with that comes EIR, you know, consequences and everything along, along the lines, not to mention just the, the overall increases in costs, which, 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 as I mentioned, the project currently as designed is not feasible. So adding additional square footage as opposed to deleting it would not help our ability to get this project financed.
I will go back to the first part of the question that you answered. I can understand the top of mind for the community that is in the senior BMR and perhaps the townhomes is the parking issue, but if you look at the broader restaurant community that, that had that 71,000 square feet of retail for residents west of Stelling or west of Bub, they are missing retail entirely in the city. There's no retail once you go west of the heart of the city. And so I think this is something for you to just consider as, as someone that wants to be in the community long-term, I think it's just, and, and hopefully the retail is also a way to attract your future customers, because when you have reasons to visit the facility, there's opportunities for future residents to, or family members of future residents to understand what is option.
Yeah, yeah.
To use that facility, so.
No, look, I, I appreciate that. We, we agree with you on the sentiment that, you know, that retail is an amenity. I think I, I mentioned that earlier. It is an important amenity to residents. And the, you know, the, the current economic climate, which we didn't, haven't even talked about, you know, the tariff environment and everything else that's going to further drive costs and make this project more difficult. We, we've spent a lot of time considering how do we fit everything we can into this project based on what was originally entitled? And I think we've taken that as far as we're able to take it and get to a point where we can get this project financed. The, the, the broader issue of, you know, is there sufficient retail in Cupertino is an important discussion point. Us as a developer of one, two acre site, we can't solve that problem for the city. And, you know, I, we're, we're trying to find the right path here to both accommodate, you know, the important aspects of this development that people care about, which in our view primarily is housing, right? Housing for seniors. I think Matt walked through the specifics of the dearth of, of senior housing options within Cupertino and within California more generally. And so that, that in our minds is the first priority. And then from there, the second priority is parking and retail. And we, we've done as much as we can, given the amount of constraints we have, both physically and financially, to introduce and maintain the, the right amount of retail and the right amount of parking.
And maybe a question for Oakmont. I know they mentioned they had several properties in the area in suburban San Jose and South Bay and Peninsula and so on. Do those properties have retail onsite? And in any of those cases, do you have situations where there is not reserved parking for retail? Where you don't have a retail parking requirement specifically?
Yeah, the retail, RCFE combination is quite rare. Related did a nice job with that in the Allure project in Santa Clara. That's one of two of the hundred communities that we operate that has retail onsite. The second is a community down in San Diego that has about 800 square feet of retail on the first floor. So not a, not a whole lot of familiarity with operating with retail on the ground floor.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, one more. It was mentioned that in other communities with, with limited parking, you have off-site parking where you shuttle the residents' cars back and forth. Given that very few residents have cars, where will that off-site parking be for Westport?
So we've pre-negotiated off-site parking at four local Oakmont communities, all local to the greater San Jose area. So they're all within a 10-mile radius of this Cupertino site. Two in San Jose, one in Palo Alto, and one kind of up near Mel Peters.
And those all have sufficient part, sufficient parking to accommodate?
They do.
Yeah, I was reading before this meeting that 4.5% of assisted living residents actually still drive, although it's expected to go up as self-driving cars become more common. But yeah, 4.5 out of 136 is still, yeah, pretty low number of spaces. I think I calculated like, you know, about nine or so. And then I'm, I'm, I have a similar question. Where did you get community feedback that parking was the main issue? I mean, I mean, I, I can't imagine that, you know, who, who would have come up with that?
So I think some of the members of the, of the public are here, and, and I think even at previous planning commission hearings, the issue of parking, the Westport seniors' project has been brought in front of this commission. It is a real issue. I can assure you of that. We've spent a lot of time with, with those folks, and that's an independent living building where people are driving, they have work, they have jobs.
Right.
And, you know, that project was entitled at 0.5 parking ratio per unit, which is completely, you know, insufficient for the type of resident within that building. And so they are very concerned about.
Okay, so it was not about the assisted living that people were saying there was insufficient parking?
I think, I think, I think their view is, you know, we, we've got a, a shortage of parking and you're taking away parking. And so that does not alleviate their situation. Again, I don't think that's an issue that, you know, we're, we're making a very significant contribution to provide parking for those residents and, and for the townhomes. And I, so I think, you know, we're fulfilling an obligation as, as is required of us. But I think that's a city issue, again, that the city needs to resolve to make sure that that project is a viable one, because a lot of people that live in the, the, the Westport seniors' building have indicated to us that, that it's just not feasible for them to continue living there if they can't park their cars.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject really, I'm gonna interject really quickly and see if we can transition to public comment. I know we have a number of members of the public that I've been reading. I appreciate the public's patience in staying with us through this process.
If I could just add one thing before. I wanted to just convey the, the sentiment that I think the perception had been that parking was the big issue over concerns expressed regarding building two. So when people were saying Westport, I believe that's where it came from, because there had been a couple of public meetings recently where there were parking concerns expressed about building two and the potential that building one could be reducing their parking further, whereas all it's doing is taking what would have been underground parking and making it surface parking. The number of spaces is the same. So sorry to interrupt.
And so, Madam City Clerk, if we can transition to public comment at this point?
We have five speaker cards in person and one hand raised on Zoom. We have first Jennifer Griffin, then Jean Bedord, then Jean Schwab. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I think the staff has done a wonderful job of trying to deal with the current iteration of Westport. Everyone has worked very hard. As I said before, my niece was in college in Corvallis at Oregon State when, when we were first discussing anything happening at the Oaks Westport. She just had, she bought a house, she got married, bought a house, and had a baby boy last Friday. She is now 30 years old. Okay, in that regard, this is how much time and effort the city has put into making sure that whatever came out of Westport was something that was going to be viable and good for Cupertino. We already have parts one and two on the ground. We have had a parking garage problem, which was promised. I was at those meetings. I spent hours of my life, especially with a brother who was ill and with cancer at the time and died several months later. We have a lot of our city time involved in here. Shopping is a big deal for the rest of Cupertino. I was appalled that someone was not going to put the parking garage in. It sounds like that was, I mean, I feel like we were sold a bill of goods. It's not this group, but whoever first proposed this, you know, it, it's, and we, we kicked Zales out or whatever, the jewelry store, and they're not happy in their location. What are we doing here? Okay, so the parking, we really need to deal with that. I don't like what the state is doing. I don't agree with HCD. I don't agree with the housing element. They don't care about the public. This is where you hear the feedback sound from the public. We want something that is going to be good for Cupertino. We have been sold a bill of goods about senior housing down at Main Street by the other group down there, and they ran out in the middle of the night. My mother-in-law was in, in Alzheimer care from July of last summer to January of this year. The family was paying $8,000 a month for Alzheimer's care, and that was top of the line. They sold the condo. The, the, the family had kept her at home for 15 years. Now, I tell you, I have seniors in my family, and I have the choice of where they're going to go. I want to make sure that this group understands that there are people in this community who are looking to them to make sure that they provide a quality project. I'm really not happy with the reduction of the parking and taking advantage of the crazy screwy laws that the state's doing to everybody. I hope that we can have good amenities, and we're buying parkland and the rest of the city.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Our next speaker is Jean Bedord, followed by Jean Schwab, followed by Diana Ferris. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. Five years ago, as a member of the Age Friendly Cupertino Task Force, I participated in all of the meetings for the Westport project. Yes, I was there on August 18, 2020, when this project was approved in the wee hours of morning, 4:00 AM. Those many community meetings resulted in a thoughtful plan that met the needs of the seniors as well as the larger community. But times change. COVID, higher interest rates, and increased construction costs made the original plan economically unfeasible. What you are considering tonight is a scaled-down plan that can be financed. Yes, I would prefer to have the original 17,000 square feet of retail and underground parking, but that doesn't pencil out. It's not going to get built. What's most important is to get this project approved and under construction. No new senior care facilities have been built in Cupertino for several decades, and our residents are aging. This is an ideal location, next to the senior center, Memorial Park, and DeAnza, as well as public transportation. It may not be perfect, but at least there is some. What's most important, this project is an opportunity to meet community needs that extend beyond just seniors. Retention of retail space for food establishments is critical in this location. We lost Hobies, Coffee Society, Togo's, Jamba Juice, an ice cream shop, and an Indian restaurant. This community vision is threatened by demands for more parking, which would eliminate the retail component. This area can come alive again with a new event center at DeAnza, but the community needs gathering places. And I specifically want to lobby for the bistro that is there at Mary and Stevens Creek. We need that so that our seniors have a place to walk across the street and have coffee and lunch with friends. I urge you to reject the requirement to add 20 parking spaces to the project, which would eliminate the retail component. There are parking alternatives, as I outlined in an email sent to the commission earlier today. Don't be short-sighted. People's spaces need to be prioritized over car spaces. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean.
Our next speaker is Jean Schwab, followed by Diana Ferris, followed by Richard Adler. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening. I'm another one of the old, old people that have been in the neighborhood for years. In fact, my husband and I live in a condo at the Casa DeAnza. In fact, my husband and I live in a condo at the Casa DeAnza, at the end of Mary Avenue on the west side. We, since that time, the configuration of Mary Avenue has been redone so that we lost width to Mary Avenue's for traffic. It was a good, it was a good modulation because they put in sizable bike lanes protected by some parking areas. So, but I'm concerned about Mary Avenue and the amount of cuts in the proposed project. I was here also when KT got us all excited about Westport. And, you know, at that time, we all asked, what about parking? What about parking? And they said, oh, don't worry, we'll have parking underneath the 48 units for senior housing and the assisted living that was being proposed. Well, the apartments went up and no underground parking. And now we're facing no more underground parking. The thing is, on Mary Avenue, parking is diminishing, and it's been an important place because of events in Memorial Park, because of Senior Center and activities at the Senior Center that overflow the parking in those areas. And there in the pipeline right now is a new project that's going to be called The Villas, which is 40 apartments, which will require redoing Mary Avenue again, taking away part of the bike, the width of the bike lanes, and taking away parking completely on the west side of Mary Avenue, and replacing the diagonal parking that's there that gets used a lot when there's events at Memorial Park, turning that into a few parallel parking spaces. So if you have a place where there's not, excuse me, not enough parking for the new project, we have a bit of a problem there.
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Diana Ferris, followed by Richard Adler, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Diana.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Diana Ferris. You may remember me from last month. I'm here to talk about the parking at Westport. I'm a native Bay Area person. I live currently at Westport, and I wanted to talk about assumptions made during a plan and the realities that happened afterwards. We were allotted a half a parking space for each unit because seniors don't drive. I think I know one person in that entire building that doesn't drive. So we've got 48 units, some of them two bedrooms, not nearly enough parking. The problem is, is that in this situation, it's unique because we have Stevens Creek that allows no residential parking. We have Memorial Park on the other side, there's no parking there. Then we have the freeway on the other side. So the only place that has any available parking is Mary. Right now, there's a 500-unit apartment building across the street from us. There's the townhomes, there's our apartments. There's also a proposed new building going in that is actually going to be built on Mary, which is taking away 89 parking spaces. Anytime there's events at Memorial Park, the Senior Center, there's even some parking for the Athletes Center, all of that overflows into Mary. And so when I look at a building that is only going to provide 34 parking spaces, now they let me know to date increased by 20, but for 101 employees, 126 units. And again, they're saying they don't drive. Well, we've heard that before. The reality is, these employees are going to be coming from out of the area, and I don't know what kind of plan they have to get them to take public transportation, but that's another concern I have. I don't know that the requirements of AB 2097 are applicable to this project. If you look at the transportation, you know, they were saying like there's six bus stops. Well, a lot of these bus stops only have one bus that comes. It doesn't go very many places, and it doesn't run on the weekends and holidays. So that's really not a good way to look at that if that meets the requirement. I'm not even sure that the half-mile meets the requirement. So I hope somebody is checking on that. But what I will say is that the assisted living people, they're 70 to 85 is what they've said is the average, although they keep, you know, referring to 85-year-olds. I want this building built, but I also want to be able to park at night. Right now, we're, you know, hesitant to leave our homes at night because we won't have parking when we get back. This is the reality. I know parking, it may be not important to someone who doesn't live there, but it's very important to me that I be able to park safely when I get home and that I be able to live my life.
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you, Adler.
Up next, we have Richard Adler, followed by two speakers on Zoom, Peggy Griffin and Lisa. I do have a presentation for Richard that I'm going to show now.
Thank you. So I just have a couple, two slides. While I'm getting that, I'm Richard Adler. I'm the Chair of Age Friendly Cupertino, and I'm also a 26-year resident of Cupertino. And I want to, just if you go to the next slide. So I just want to provide some context about why building this kind of senior housing is truly urgent. Matt mentioned a little bit about demographics, but I want to drill down a little deeper. In 2015, Cupertino's 65-plus population was about 12% of the total population of the city. By 2020, that had increased to 14%. And in 2025, today, the city's 65-plus population is about 15% of our population, about 8,500 residents. If we look ahead, Cupertino's seniors will forecast to be 17% of the population by 2030, just five years from now. And by 2035, it'll be fully 20% of Cupertino's population, or approximately 11,400 seniors, making this age group the fastest-growing age group in the city. Now, if we can go to the next slide, and there really is a dearth of housing. And particularly, as you look at the older portion of the population, as the number of older adults increase, so will the prevalence of Alzheimer's disease. It's generally about 10% of the population, generally over 65. But if you look at the 75 to 84%, today it's about 17%. And of those 85+, it's about a third of that population. Those are daunting numbers. And as that population increases in Cupertino of 65-year-olds from 8,400 in 2025 to 11,000 in 2035, the number of residents with Alzheimer's will increase from about 895 today to 1,250 in 10 years. And right now, according to my calculations, there's only about 59 memory care units in this city. This project will add another 35 beds to give us a total of 94. So that's a substantial increase. So I just think that if you look at where we are today and where the population is going, they're true, we really are underserved in terms of providing this kind of care. And the places that do it, by the way, the Forum and Sunny View, wonderful places, but those are what are known as CCRCs. Those have very large buy-ins. This is a rental model. It's very different, and there's nothing like it in Cupertino today. So I think, you know, as you make these decisions about things like parking and retail, which are important, please keep in mind that the crucial driver is the need for more senior housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
We have two speakers on Zoom, Peggy Griffin and Lisa. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. First, I want to commend the developers for their commitment to provide the BMR and the town and rowhouse parking that they are supposed to provide. I also encourage the staff to add the 20 parking spaces. And everybody to work on a compromise. Not everybody gets what they want if you get something that moves forward. The other thing is, the park, parking fees, please don't waive them. I've heard things like, the seniors are not going to do very much wear and tear on facilities. Well, you just heard Richard Adler say that our population is growing. This facility is across from Memorial Park, the Senior Center. Our seniors are living longer, they're healthier, they're more active, and they use classes. The Senior Center has gobbled up two sections of the Memorial Park parking and street parking. They play pickleball, tennis, they go to concerts, they walk in the park. Please do not waive the parking and loo fees. I encourage the developer to and the city to explore putting together the two retail sections for two reasons. One, please provide the bistro. It sounds like it seems to be a big hit. Also, if you have the two together, there's more traffic, and you also have the possibility that if needed, you could put them together for something bigger. Let's see, what else? And I, as a senior, resent the assumption that just because you're a senior, you are not capable of doing anything, the minute you get gray hair, you can't drive, that the ladies that lives in the BMR building, many, many of them drive, but the assumption was they wouldn't. Please don't write us off. We have a lot of value, and we do provide it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Up next, we have Lisa. Welcome, Lisa.
I'm going to go in many different directions, and I won't get everything in. Please don't waive park fees. There's absolutely zero excuse for that. I appreciate Commissioner Lindskog bringing up the placemaking, because that was a big pitch when this was, this project was accepted and approved. And, yeah, all of our lives changed. Our household is working differently than it would have been a while ago, but we planned for that. You know, it's frustrating from time after time to the excuses, oh, we can't get funding, oh, it won't pencil out. Well, you know what? Then don't go so vigorous and think that you can do whatever it is you get approved. And I know you didn't get the actual approval, because someone else did and sold it all off, but in your purchase of that, and you're buying into this project, really, I wish commercial developers would become more realistic and honest, and take into account that there may be downfalls, and you might not get all the money you need. So you got to work with that before you purchase. That's just me venting. So the placemaking, I think, is really important, not just for, for the entire community, which this project was meant to be for the entire community. And if you're going to chip away at that, you've got to keep the things that made sense, even if they have to be smaller. Separating retail does not make any sense. And being near its own park, part of that was to have a variety of people sharing the same space, people of age, different ages, and all else. Different ages is particularly important in this instance, I think, and it was sold as that. So please do what you can to get that back. And, and really, the lot, 4,000 square feet of retail, that's retail building, that's not retail space. A thousand square foot is such a small place for a growing community. It's really sad, whether you get away with this or not, you know, I value and understand the need for the housing, but we can't, everything's done in a silo by developers instead of thinking of the entire city, while your city is thinking of the entire city. And it's happening everywhere, and it's wrong. And I wish there was more effort by the big bucks guys to care a little more about the entire community, not just their little piece of it.
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time. We have no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would the applicant like to respond to the public on any of the comments?
Yeah, thank you for all the, thank you for all the comments. The, you know, the latest, the last comment in particular around the, you know, the retail footprint, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I think if, we're certainly amenable to having that discussion and figuring out if that's, you know, what the community desire is, then I think we can, we can make that work. And I think, I think all of the other comments that were, you know, that were laid out, certainly appreciate the public input. I think we've spoken to a lot of the different comments around, you know, which of our, what type of residence we have in our building versus an independent living building. Diane, I agree with a lot of the comments that you said with respect to the issues you guys are facing. And, and so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's important to clarify perhaps that the parking expectations that were from the senior BMR living are being met by the proposed plan. Is that, is that fair? Okay.
Yes, yes, that's, that's 100% accurate. The commitment that we made to provide that parking is, has not changed, and we are providing those 39 stalls for the BMR building and the townhomes.
Okay, great. So with that, I think we will close the public hearing. I want to thank the public for your patience sitting through a long evening and staying to offer public comments. Commissioners, are we ready to move to discussion? Does anyone need a break or? Okay. So then let's move to discussions if anyone wants to open the discussions up. Any of our commissioners?
Yeah, so thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you to the public for making your comments and staying so long. I did want to echo some of the previous comments from Chair Rao, as well as Commissioner Lindskog, just around retail and how important it is for this community. I did look in our general plan, and there, I could easily find at least nine general plan policies that cite the importance of retail in this specific area. Westport is part of the Oaks Gateway Node, which is defined as a gateway retail and shopping node. And it specifically says, new residential, if allowed, should be designed on the mixed-use village concept. It's also, you know, part of the West Stevens Creek Boulevard area, which is part of the, part of the city special area. And, you know, I know that you're concerned about whether or not the retail will be successful, and you may have not had as good of an experience elsewhere, but this is a different piece of land. It's at the confluence of many different communities. You have DeAnza College, Memorial Park, with many events and often a lot of people in it. You know, obviously, we're adding new units, 272 new units in the Westport area, as well as you have the existing neighborhood of Mary Ave. And so I would think that this community can sustain a larger footprint of retail. And, you know, moreover, the idea that we're adding population but reducing retail, I think, is difficult because we're forcing residents, new residents, to travel further for the same basic needs. And, you know, a lot of the general plan does talk about building communities that are walkable and bikeable and accessible and lowering VMT. And, you know, we have a great opportunity here to be able to do that. And then, you know, we've had the community feedback as well around this, but even in an old staff report that I found, it said that the Oaks Shopping Center previously generated 2,200. 2,200 weekday trips per day. So that was the level of demand for retail that this area previously had up until the time that it was demolished. So I, I absolutely think that the demand can be there again. And I'm not, you know, I know that the 1,700, sorry, 17,000 square feet of retail may be somewhat unrealistic now, given that the times have changed, but I, I do think that we can go upwards from 4,000 and increase that and still find it, a way for it to be viable for you. You know, I, I do, I understand that financially it may be difficult, but I have seen other projects put in retail and just, you know, make, acknowledge that they might be making less there, but they are doing it for the long-term benefit of the community. So with that, I'd like to hear how the rest of my fellow commissioners think about this.
Yeah, and I'd love to see the NOI factored into the retail to sort of look at if there's any possibilities of offsetting some of that. I know the big part of the cost reduction was the underground parking, certainly sensitive to that and appreciate the impact that that can have. I was curious if NOI were to be factored in, whether that cost of retail could further reduce. And again, if you looked at maybe reducing the parking, again, I'd like to maybe ask a question of staff, if we have examples in the city where we have not had to reserve parking necessarily for retail, is there any, anything that we have as a precedent there or opportunities?
We have, in the past, done shared parking between uses, but that's mainly to account for, you know, the fact that at nighttime retail is not for retail use, it can be used for any other use, but not necessarily having overlap because generally, retail is the one that, that hurts the most when parking's not available.
With the plan development zone, there's flexibility with parking. I mean, that's the intent of the P-zone is to try to look at the specific project. And I think obviously, in this case, the residential portion has fairly negligible parking demand. It's really, the retail is parked right now per our code, four spaces per thousand. So I think for the applicant and our discussions too, some of the tension has been wanting to increase retail while there's also been some parking concerns. And they're clearly at odds together. I think if you were to manage that, I think, as Pew pointed out, from a time perspective, retail may be closed at times, other people could use the spaces, that would provide flexibility too, so.
Yeah, and just to add on that, if I look at two examples of fairly successful retail in the city, the shopping center by TJ Maxx and then Ranch 99, they are both heavily parked and parking can be a scarcity for, for, for customers coming into the shopping centers, but that does not drive traffic away because the retail is still attractive to the residents and so they look for parking or they're creative with maybe finding other parking. So certainly would be of interest for us to see if we can do something to accommodate shared parking or any other means of accommodating the cost of retail where the parking doesn't have to scale linearly with the additional square footage for retail. So I'd like to see if there's any other comments from commissioners.
I'll go. So I have a number of notes here, I just, I'll just shoot through them really quickly. The first one was, this is sort of in the order of the presentation, reduction of retail. I have no issue that, you know, the, the developer here has, has a, has a right by virtue of the remaining exception. So there's really not a discussion there, you know, other than, you know, in, in the trade-off, in, you know, in the kind of package of trade-offs, how does retail fit into that? There's a change in the number of units, I don't think that that's significant. You know, it's, it's a fractional, fractional percentage. So I don't think it's an issue. With regard to parking, you know, which does seem to be the big issue, I definitely saw in the emails that we received from the public, that definitely seemed to be a common theme. The city's taking unusual interpretation of, to me, appears to be an unusual interpretation of AB 2097. So I personally disagree, but I understand, I mean, this is, this is the city attorney's determination. You know, I will, again, highlight, there was no reduction in the other buildings in the, you know, to Building 2 and Building 3. I do think the Building 1, you know, I think there's been good analysis on what, on what's going on there. There is a little bit, I think, of a factor that, that, that depending on the age of the people there, you know, I suspect that the age of people in Building 2 is probably a little bit lower than the expected ones in the assisted care. And that may account for higher car usage. So I, I do, I'm a little concerned that the Building 1 residents, in terms of the parking allocation, that that might be a little short. I, I guess I would say, but I think that that easily could be addressed, and this is, this actually was, was touched on in the developer's presentation, you know, that that, that can be something you can address with, you know, TDM and working out something like a shuttling, shuttling or other kind of agreement that can address your employee needs to, to be able to, you know, increase the ratio back slightly for, for residents. And then I think, you know, Cupertino, you know, in a, in a lot of these cases, you might fault, we might fault in our first discussion today, we might fault that if there's an issue that causes people to want to park, you know, park and live in vehicles, that the city is not doing anything, not taking actions to address that. This is actually an area where the city is taking, taking actions, having services like Hopper available, make them available. And by the time we get to the end of the year, I suspect we'll have Waymo here as well. So there are lots and lots of things that can help, you know, help change that, that parking requirement ratio. And I think that, you know, those, those are something that should be consideration. With the Parkland dedication, you know, the, the immediate issue here cited in the staff report is the incremental units. Again, the incremental number of units is small, it doesn't matter in the, in the big picture. But I think that it's the big part, you know, the, the main part, the multimillion section of the Parkland dedication. And here, you know, the amount of Parkland dedication that's charged is at the city's discretion and it is something that can be used as incentive to try to get this built. So I would actually say, there's, I think there's great value in trying to, you know, in trying to do the things the city can to move forward this project. I'll come back to this in a second as well. So this is something, an area of consideration where, you know, I think that it is worthy consideration for the city to look at what that, at what the, they had to make an adjustment to Parkland dedication to try to make this, make this a more viable project. Heart of the City kind of came up, kind of talking about that. The regulations that we have, they're what we have, you know, and many people worked on it very, very hard over the years to get them, to get them where they were. But, you know, I, I would also, I would, I would say that, you know, although, and it's very true, you know, there were, there was a lot of discussion, one of the things that characterized a lot of the discussion for the Westport project was the amount of traffic that was currently, you know, what was the baseline of traffic going into the shopping center? I would just say, you know, although that, that number is, that number is, you know, 2,200 kind of number is, is what I remember from at that time as well, I would also say, I think that the retail that was present, you know, for the last 20 years of the Oaks is probably not what, what people are looking for. In that, in that respect, you know, it was kind of, well, there was kind of a space that was not being, well, you know, wasn't being utilized. That, that doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that, you know, it wasn't valuable to the people who were, you know, going there for dance lessons or going there to, to frequent the restaurants. But at the same time, I think it is difficult, it is difficult in a new construction to justify, you know, whether you like Coffee Society or not, that probably wouldn't be the kind of tenant that we'd be trying to look for, you know, that, that the operator would be trying to look for in a place like this today. So I would just take that into account as well. I think that, you know, particularly as the needs of the city and the governmental requirements placed on the city have changed over time, you know, it probably, it may be time to relook at Heart of the City. I think that we've done that before and really understand, you know, are the best uses of the spaces we have, you know, the ones that were, the ones that were selected 25 years I think that Related talked about, this is something that, when I first heard about this, when I first heard about the idea of, of going to assisted living, this was, this was when KT Urban was, was running the project. And, you know, I think that that was an important part, important part of the decision there was something that the developer did bring up here, which was that they intend to be, you know, continue to be the owner and continue to be the operator. And I think that has a lot of, that has a lot of value. Particularly has value in the context of the discussion we're having here today, because, you know, if you're, if you're here to stand up the building and then take off and sell it, then you might say, you know, in the most, in a perfect possible world, there would be very, very little parking, you know, parking allocated here, but I don't really care because, you know, three years from now, I'll be gone. I, I don't think that that's what they're saying, what this developer's saying. So they really have to find the solution. And whether that's, you know, whether that's the one that, the one that, you know, whether is it this specific number? I think that the general idea is that, you know, they can't make, they can't make a proposal here. If you're in it for, if you're in it for, for the distance, you can't make a proposal here, that just can't possibly work. So I think, I think that that's something to be considered as well. You know, the next, should this not, should this project not get approved? You don't know if the next person coming would be somebody who's, who's not planning to come here for the long term. So I think that, you know, looking at the, looking at the, what we've heard here today and at the business as they've been operating elsewhere, you know, in California and across the country, I think that that's, that's probably a plus, a plus factor. And I guess, I guess I would also worry maybe a little bit about, about what happens, you know, what happens if we can't, if we can't make this project work? Things change over time. And, you know, the economic environment changes, the things that you can do change. I think that one of the things you know for sure, should, should this project not get approved, the next project will use AB 2097. There's no question that that would apply and that they could decide to build, you know, the same building or a larger building with no parking. So I would please, please factor that in as well. Factor that in your consideration. I think that, that, the fact that AB 20, now 2097 exists, actually means that even if it's not a builder's remedy, I think there's some, there's some concern here that, that the position that the city has taken, you know, is that, is that going to be interpreted as something that would cause us to, you know, put our, our housing element at risk? Regardless of that, you know, I think that, that the next thing that comes, you know, that, that may, you know, the, the parking issue is something that comes with, with AB 2097 and that, that is not something that necessarily causes, would be a builder's remedy proposal. Last couple of points here, I know I've been going on a while here. Well, actually, I think that the main part is, I, I think that there's, there was a controversy when, when this program, so I go back a ways with this, with Westport. There was controversy at the time when it was first proposed because one of the things it did was, you know, in this generation of the proposal that had the townhouses, it was already lower in density than, than what was the, the maximum for the area. So as a result, you know, in, in a city where, you know, you have a high RINA number and very limited places to build, you know, you, you really want to try to take the opportunity to maximize that. So I, I guess I would say, that I really do, I really believe that probably the best use of this space is, as it's been coming out from a number of presentations here, really is that, that this will be, you know, that this will be a residential, residential usage down the line and that that really meets the city's needs, you know, in terms of what it, what it does for the city, the financial benefits from property tax, you know, all these different areas. And so I would just say, you know, I would, I would hope that people would, would factor those, those elements in as well. My particular, in my particular view, you know, retail has a particular problem of as you increase the amount of retail, you greatly increase the amount of parking, which is a problem area here. So I actually would say, you know, at the level that we're at, you know, I would, I would consider, you know, are there benefits there? And if this, if this is something that can't work, if, you know, if, if it can't be an allowance made on things like the, like the park dedication fee, that I would actually say that perhaps, perhaps you just consider not having retail. Maybe not the most popular comment, but thank you very much for the, for the info. And again, thank you for everybody and their, and their input, you know, over, not just tonight, but over, you know, many years on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Fung. Appreciate the comments. Maybe a quick clarifying question for staff. The density bonus incentive, is that a fixed reduction in square footage of retail or does that refer to reduction in retail square footage, leaving the number open to discussion?
The applicant applied with a fixed reduction in retail to 4,000. But again, I, I believe in, and please step in, Pew or Luke, you know, it is up to the discretion of the, of the commissioners of whether they can make the findings for that incentive concession.
Okay. Please. Yes, please. And we haven't got a motion on the table yet, so if at the end of your comments, if, if I have a volunteer for a motion, I will take it, or if you want to use the mic while you have it, either way.
Yeah.
For the purpose of discussion, that's maybe.
Okay. So I was on city council when the original plan for the Oaks was approved. It was a great project, much better than what KT Urban had originally proposed with a hotel and office buildings, both of which are especially not profitable now. So I really wish it was built as originally designed and I think we're letting the residents down. If we allow the retail to go down to 4,000 square feet, that doesn't mean it has to be 17,600, but it could be something in between. I don't like that the BMR was not distributed between the three sub-projects. I realize that the developer at the time was able to do that for specific reasons. And then I didn't like when the parcels were sold to three different owners. The commitment to supply the parking that was promised to the senior BMR and townhomes is fine, but unfortunately, it doesn't take into account the parking on Mary that will end up being used by employees of, of the assisted living project. So this is bad for the residents of the BMR housing, probably not as bad for the residents of the townhouses. So the 20,000 square feet of retail was really the saving grace of this project for residents. It's now proposed to go down to a total of 6,400, 4,000 in Building 1 and 2,400 in Building 2. So as someone else said, you know, I think residents were sold the bill of goods here and we're being very short-sighted if we allow the retail to reduce, be reduced all the way down to 4,000, since clearly the residents want more retail. And there's another issue, and we've seen this at mixed use throughout the city, when you only include a tiny amount of token retail, you don't get the foot traffic and the, and the retail fails. We've seen this at Trevigna, at City Center, and at Montebello, and partially at Metropolitan. Now, on the counter side, since the project is assisted living, it really does not require the 80 parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms. And the, the number of spaces for residents of the assisted living is probably sufficient, given the number that would actually drive. And, you know, I appreciate that they would have off-site parking if there happened to be more cars than there are spaces. I think we also need a covenant that this project will remain as assisted living in perpetuity, because if we allowed the, allowed the project to be converted to condominiums or apartments, then we would actually need those parking spaces. And in any case, I think we will, the city will have to put in limited time or permit parking on Mary Avenue, in Memorial Park, at the senior center, Quinlan Center, Sports Center, and Alves Drive west of Stelling, or the employees will be using the limited parking on Mary. And I think the idea that 75% of employees will come in on transit is, is, you know, is just really absurd. The VTA lines serving that area do not go from the job-rich areas to the housing-rich areas, and many of these employees will be traveling a very long way to come to work. So they will have to park somewhere and there needs to be some... So they will have to park somewhere and, um, there needs to be some, um, something done to accommodate that. So then on to AB 2097. According to the state of California and according to our city attorney, AB 27 was not in effect when the project was approved and was not invoked, obviously, because it wasn't in existence. And nothing in the bill implies that it's retroactive to previously approved projects. And as David pointed out, the developer, they could abandon this project and come forward with a brand new project that would qualify for AB 2097 and have no retail. And they could do that, but also as a new project, separate from the two existing projects, it would impose additional requirements on the developer that would be costly. I mean, besides, and the impact fees would be higher as a, since it's being approved five years or so later. So I think, you know, we should voluntarily reduce the parking requirement of 80 spaces for the housing, but we need to ensure we don't reduce the retail down to a token amount. And I think the 4,000 square feet is way too low. And I think if the developer would, you know, decided, oh, we're not going to build, neither the city nor related would actually benefit from such approach. I think we can reach a compromise of a reduction in parking, a reduction in retail from 17,600 down to, uh, more reasonable amount, maybe, maybe 8,000. And resident parking go down to 11 spaces and we could still end up with a decent project. And with that reduction in parking, there would be space for more retail. And then finally, the impact fee elimination is just totally out of the question. I mean, seniors are a big user of park space at the senior center and, you know, I would definitely not be in favor of eliminating the impact fee. I agree with staff on that, um, on that part of it. And yeah, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. And before I continue to take comments, maybe for the purpose of moving this towards a motion, I wanna, I wanna check if it is okay to ask the applicant if there is openness to consider, based on what you're hearing today, uh, your request for a reduction in retail, is that, is that a fixed number? Is there any room for us to work with here? Because obviously you're hearing from all sides on this issue, but only we can hear your position on this.
Sure. Thank you for the question. So our understanding of, of the state density bonus law, um, and the city attorney can obviously opine, is that we actually have the ability to reduce retail 100% to zero square feet. We made a very ardent effort not to do that because of the importance of, of the retail for the community. Unfortunately, on the other side of pushing the retail higher, right, the constraints are not just the, the costs and they're not just the parking. There's also, which no one has discussed, it's also the limitation of the available ground floor space. So even if we had the parking, even if we were somehow able to overcome the cost issue, we don't physically have space to build the additional retail unless we get rid of the mechanical, electrical plumbing required for the building or some other use that is required for the assisted living component. So, um, look, we, we want to be as flexible as we can. I think on the, the point of retail, we've taken it as far as we're able to take it, given the constraints that we have, the physical constraints, the financial constraints and the parking constraints.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Linsckog.
Okay. So, um, so I, I do disagree, I, I agree with Commissioner Fung. I disagree with our city attorney. I think 2097 applies. So I think we, you know, I, I think we have to consider that. I, I, my suggestion would be, I, I agree that 75% staff offsite or not parking seems optimistic. Maybe you have seen that in, in other cities, but, um, I was talking recently to a student at Deansha College. She lives near Miller Elementary, I think, or Middle. And it, she takes public transportation to get to Deansha College and it takes her two hours from one side of Cupertino to the other. So we just got her an e-bike, by the way. The Rotary bought her an e-bike because by bike it takes her 15 minutes.
You said one side of Cupertino to another takes two hours on public transit?
Yep. It took her two hours, an hour and a half minimum, usually two hours.
Within Cupertino, not, okay. Wow.
So, yeah, I, I can find, I can give you guys the details, but yeah, we just dealt with this. So, so it's kind of top of mind for me as to, you know, how feasible our, um, and I would like transit, I love transit. I would like to see our transit be more used and be more usable. But the, the reality of it right now is it's, it's not that sufficient. And so, um, whatever we approve today, I would like to see a TDM added to it where we track, um, and, and we, we track progress and we measure progress and we implement, systematic plans for how we manage the, the 75% offsite or, or carpooling or whatever, but like some sort of, of tracking and measurement of performance there. And, and then maybe we do need to implement at some point the, the stuff that you guys, the, the lines that you guys crossed out if, if, you know, we are not able to meet our metrics, uh, in the TDM. So, so that's one thing. Um, I do think we should approve the 20 additional parking spaces. Thank you for, um, for sharpening your pencils and, and working with the city and hearing the concerns. Clearly parking is an issue. So, so we very much appreciate your willingness to work with us on this one. Retail, as you've heard, is, is a big issue also. And, and totally hear you on, on the, the fact that, you know, you're kind of maxed out at 4,000 square feet. I know that I, if I remember correctly, you said that it saved you between $5 to $7 million to get rid of the underground parking. Is that correct?
The underground parking, we estimated at, uh, between 200 and 300 square, uh, dollars per square foot on 50,000 square feet. So it was between 10 and 15 million dollars.
10 and 15, okay.
The, uh, the retail component, we estimated 400 to $500 a square foot. That's for the core and shell and then plus the tenant improvement allowance. And that was between 5 and 7 million dollars.
All right. Yeah. So that's the, the number I remembered. So, uh, I, I, I am in agreement with the city's position on the in lieu park fees, the 12,000. I mean, I, I don't think we can reasonably count the square footage of little pieces of greenery all over the site. If we're looking just at the park, it's 12,000 square feet. The requirement is 18,000 square feet. It's, it's pretty clear cut. Um, I don't think we can reasonably, um, as good stewards of the city, say that we can count the little pieces of greenery everywhere as part, as, as park. It's not park. It's, it's not. So, so I am in agreement with the city on the in lieu park fees. That being said, however, if the developer can be flexible in some way and, again, sharpen your pencils and find a few more thousand square feet of retail, um, I would like the city to consider the in lieu park fees as, as a potential negotiating point or leverage that we can use to, to make you guys not entirely whole. I recognize that, but some extent to, to compensate you for, for that. And again, that would be in, in, as, as being long-term members of our community and recognizing the, the importance of this for our community. So like I said, I, I recognize that that's, that's asking you for something. So I guess my, my question here would be, is that something you'd be willing to explore? Knowing that that's a potential point of, of discussion and leverage for you?
I mean, look, we, we certainly appreciate, um, the, the thought, I think. It, it's, it's a little bit difficult for me to respond, you know, im- immediately to that, um, to that comment. You know, the, the, while the incentive structure that you're, you know, you're putting in front of us, um, is potentially interesting, I think the constraints, again, will prevail on our ability to, to really add meaningful additional retail. So we're, we're certainly willing to, you know, to, to consider, um, that, that type of discussion, but I, I, unfortunately, um, we, we can't add additional square footage in, in the, in the base of the building. And so that, that's, you know, that alongside the parking, um, those two constraints are really what, what are driving the, the limitation on the retail component.
Right. But we, we already said we don't, we, parking is not necessarily a consideration, right? I think you've heard that from multiple commissioners here.
So parking is, um, you know, whether there is some kind of parking that's mandated for retail is one conversation. Whether a retail tenant is willing to, uh, sign a lease for a space without ample parking is, is kind of a separate matter. And, um, look, we, we've spent time with the retail brokers in this location and talking about back when it was a 17,000 square foot retail center, obviously in terms of underwriting, how much rent are, are folks willing to pay? What, what, what can we expect for tenant improvement allowance? And so we have a very thorough understanding from local brokers around, you know, what drives tenant demand. And I can tell you that parking unequivocally is an important factor for folks, um, that are looking to expand space, um, within, uh, you know, within, within a, a new footprint. There is ample, there is some demand, right, locally? Deansha students, the Cupertino Senior Center, obviously Westport itself, um, and the apartments across the street. But that alone, even in aggregate, is not sufficient to sustain, uh, a, a retail footprint alone. So you do need to have people that are coming from outside of the community and that requires folks to be able to, to, you know, park on site and quickly access the retail. So that, that in our minds, um, whether there's a restriction or not, really from a practical point of view on how we lease those spaces, uh, is very important. And I think, you know, one example of that, 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 um, the commission can look at is actually the, the BMR building, the independent living building that has, um, 2,400 square feet of retail that's sitting vacant today. Because I think primarily that's, that's probably one of the key concerns, um, that they're facing.
Well, so that takes me to my last point, uh, is the place making. So part of the reason, uh, a retail space sits vacant is because it's sitting all alone in the middle of nowhere with no other retail around it, right? But when you create a place and you bring, uh, you converge multiple retail spaces together, that there starts to be a dynamic, right? So, so I can kind of understand why it's been sitting vacant because it's, it's like, it, it has to be such a good retail that it's a destination for, for people, right? And, and that's, that's a tall order for any retail shop, right? That it's so amazing that people are going to drive there and park there just for it. Versus if you have three or four or five that are together, like, you know, we've seen at Main Street or any of our shopping centers, then it's, there is the, 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 what's the, what's the word I want? There's a confluence of interests. So, so I don't know that that necessarily, uh, there's causality there that it's because there's lack of parking. I think there's other issues at play, um, bigger issues at play. And, and, you know, there is parking on the street, which we haven't accounted for at all in all this calculation, right? There's parking at Deansha across the street, there's parking at Memorial Park. So there's quite a lot of parking around. So I'm not as worried about the parking and I do think that if we, if we create a destination, we, we do some place making, like a proper place making, especially you have a park already. If we, if we can create a retail, um, dynamic around that park, um, we can drive, uh, retail interest. And maybe we have to get creative, maybe it's a two, two-floor retail. I don't know. I mean, maybe people are willing to go upstairs if there's like a coffee shop, maybe, I don't know. But I would like to see us try and figure out the retail and, and I, and I would like to see the city be willing to consider looking at the in lieu park fees as, as, um, as, you know, a way to, to help you come to that conclusion.
Thank you, Commissioner Linsckog. I know we have another agenda item as well, so I ask our commissioners to be brief with your comments and direct the comments at, uh, moving us forward. Did you have comments to add, vice chair? Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion just to move us forward here. I'm gonna move the staff recommendation with conditions of approval that I'd like to add. Uh, I'd like to add a condition of approval for, um, securing the 20 offsite parking. That was discussed as something optional. I'd like to see that pursued. And I'd like to see, um, exploration of the possibility for addition of retail, subject to, um, any design flexibility that you may have. So if he can, if staff can help craft a amended motion that moves the staff recommendation along with the conditions of approval for an agreement for an offsite 20-unit parking and exploring the possibility of expanding retail. And can I, can I ask if there's a second for that?
Is it, can we actually put a number on the increase in retail, just so it doesn't become like, you know?
I believe you could second the motion and then amend the motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Uh, and did you want to amend the motion?
Uh, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners what is a acceptable number of square footage that we think for retail should be added?
Again, I, I wanna be careful in how we, as, as the, uh, as the mover of the motion, I think we are bound by the density bonus incentive. And so the condition of approval is a good faith request to explore possibilities as you look at design. And I don't believe we can put a number to that, but I'm open to hearing otherwise from staff or any board.
I, I believe you could put a number to it since it's more of a request than a, okay? Square footage must be doubled to a minimum of 8,000. I think if there was a target number that you would say ideally, if there could be 8,000 square feet, I think that could be added in as, knowing the density bonus has limitations on what you can require. It's more of a request.
I would also recommend one additional thing, sorry to interrupt you, um, but also maybe including your motion, the notion that they don't have to add additional parking onsite, as you had mentioned possibly earlier.
Thank you. I would, I would like to, yes, I would like to include that in the condition of approval to not reserve parking for the retail in order to provide the flexibility to add more retail. Go ahead, Commissioner Shor.
Yeah, I would amend the motion with the, um, request for 8,000 square feet and also to, uh, allow a reduction in parking from the currently required 80 parking spaces for the, um, assisted living housing and also put in there that we put in either permit or limited time parking on Mary Avenue, Memorial Park, the Senior Center, Quinlan Center, the Sports Center, Alves Drive west of Stelling to prevent, um, the use of that parking by employees. Because as Commissioner Linsckog pointed out, um, the 75% is, idea of mass transit is just really absurd in this area. And we really don't want all that parking in the other areas used up by employees. So I think part of the conditions of approval needs to be a way to, um, ensure that that existing parking is not used up by employees.
Commissioner Shor, are you asking if I would make a friendly amendment to the motion?
Yeah, okay.
Would you summarize that succinctly if you could?
Sure. If it's possible. Summarize the request to increase the retail to 8,000 square feet. A covenant that, um, the housing will remain as assisted living in perpetuity. That we put in limited time or permit parking in the areas I specified, Mary Avenue, Memorial Park, Senior Center, Quinlan Center, Sports Center, Alves Drive west of Stelling. And that we also allow the reduction of the current 80 spaces for residents of assisted living down to 11 spaces.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Can I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
Okay. So typically, the way that permit parking works here is that, that there are people who...
Qualify.
Yeah, well, there is a neighborhood or community that we qualify. Who would that be in this case?
That's a good question. That's why also, I mean, when I was thinking of this, I was thinking more of the time limited parking, so we could get rid of the permit part, and just say, you know, it's two-hour parking, which would actually be good for retail as well, because those spaces would not be taken up by people parking all day.
Except that, except that that would actually be a problem for the people who do live there, who, you know...
Right, right, for the, right, for the residents of the BMR senior housing, that is an issue, because Mary Avenue is no longer free parking, you know, for them.
Yeah, I want to clarify, sorry, I want to clarify the friendly amendment real quick while we are trying to accept a friendly amendment here. We have a staff recommendation that is ninety-three parking onsite, and the condition of approval that I offered in the motion was to pursue an agreement for an additional twenty parking offsite. I'm not sure where your amendment to that came in from.
So you did, you did mean offsite?
Offsite.
Okay, okay.
Ninety-three plus another twenty offsite.
I thought you had said offsite, but meant onsite, the twenty that were being offered.
No.
You're talking about something separate.
The staff recommendation is ninety-three onsite, and the condition of approval is an additional twenty offsite.
No, I think it's onsite.
That is the staff recommendation. The twenty onsite is part of the ninety-three, and staff can clarify.
That's correct. So, they're providing seventy-three surface parking spaces. The condition requires, you know, per the feedback from the applicant, that they can accommodate twenty further spaces onsite for ninety-three. And I think, Chair, what you're saying is that you'd like to see twenty more spaces secured somewhere offsite?
Yes.
Where would that be?
I would leave it to the applicant, unless there are proposals to modify the amendment.
Just for a clarification, Chair, is that twenty offsite as a request for the applicant to consider doing that?
Or a requirement?
It would be a, it would be a requirement, offsite. And I'm open to feedback from our commissioners here, if you want to propose that this be a request as opposed to a requirement, we can...
I'm not really sure where the twenty offsite is coming from, like...
I believe the staff report and their report indicated there's twenty at De Enza that they were looking at, or there was something with De Enza that they were looking at.
But I guess my, so you're thinking for the staff, or...
It would provide them the flexibility to use as needed, but if there were an agreement with De Enza.
So the total would go to one thirteen, then?
Yes.
Right, yeah, I did all these calculations, and I came up with one twelve, so, yeah, one thirteen is also fine.
And is there a preference for whether this be a request?
I don't know.
I don't think it matters.
Okay, all right, so I will then say the condition of approval is a request to pursue twenty offsite, and explore reserved, non-reserved parking for retail.
Do you want to say, Chair, just for clarification, and to provide flexibility, do you wish to say on or offsite in the event the applicant is able to do something?
Yes.
Onsite, just...
Yes, we will make that on or offsite, yes.
Excuse me, I just had one other clarification, because I know as part of John's presentation, we had the offsite requirement in there that was struck out, because I think, as I tried to explain, is we had talked to the applicant that that could potentially be needed in the future, but that's really not known now, and the discussions were really focused more on managing employee parking, since that's really the one thing under their control. But again, that, I would say that's an unknown, and we're trying to solve for something that we don't know we really need to solve for right now. But I just wanted to clarify that that was no longer staff's recommendation, so this would be in addition to staff's recommendation, if we were putting that back in.
That's correct. So the staff recommendation in the report is a total of ninety-three onsite, and this would be a condition of approval to request an additional twenty on or offsite, onsite or offsite.
As a requirement, or as a suggestion?
As a suggestion.
And I'd point out, the requirement now, if we accept the city attorney and the state's interpretation that AB 2097 is not retroactive, that would be a hundred and twelve spaces. It would be eighty plus the thirty-two for the, for building, building one and the, sorry, building two, and the townhouses.
So can I request staff to read back the motion, if you could?
Lindsay, do you want me to? I can try.
I have the friendly amendment, so the amendment was to pursue an agreement for twenty additional parking offsite and onsite, leaving the location to the applicant as a suggestion to use as needed, totaling a hundred and thirteen spots.
And there was more?
I'll go through it, so my, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the chair moved to suggest exploring twenty on or offsite parking spaces, and explore for the possibility of adding additional retail, but not adding any additional parking for that added retail. I believe that Commissioner Ksolschron seconded that motion. Commissioner Shorff wanted a friendly amendment, which I'm not quite sure whether that was accepted, but I have doubled the retail to eight thousand square feet, a covenant that the housing will remain as assisted living in perpetuity, time-limited parking on Mary Avenue, Quinlan, Sports Center, Memorial Park, Alves Drive, west of Stelling, and a reduction of the current eighty spaces required for the assisted living down to eleven. That's what I currently have.
Did you have Quinlan Center in there, too?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I currently have, but no one's accepted the friendly amendment yet, from what I can tell. And I believe both the original mover and the seconder have to accept the friendly.
Okay, I would limit the time-limited parking to Mary Avenue only.
I will make the point to that, and I saw that that is not the applicant's responsibility, because that is in the city's realm, and so that should not be a condition of approval of this project, at least as far as I can...
Yeah, that's a good point. The city can, if they choose, decide to do whatever parking restrictions that they wish in all of those places, so I would remove all that, then.
Okay.
That's a good point, thank you, Pew.
All right. The question on the table is, do you accept the amendment to the motion?
Can I just make a quick comment? Sorry, I just want to make a quick comment.
Sorry, procedurally, do you accept the amendment to the motion, because...
Yes.
Okay, please.
Okay.
So, I feel like this is getting way more complicated than it needs to be. I think if our main concern is, we don't know where the staff is gonna park, let's just ask for a TDM. I think that would be a much simpler way to solve this issue than trying to put parking permits, and parking, two-hour parking limits, and, you know, all that fun stuff. So, can I make a substitute motion?
I believe the parking limit was taken off, because that does not apply.
The time limit was removed for all of those places.
Right, but the thing about keeping it in perpetuity, I mean, that's, that seems...
It's a big concern, because, you know, we've seen developments that are intended for one purpose, and then, oh, you know, no one's willing to pay this much for assisted living, so we're gonna just turn it into apartments. And then you really have a problem with the parking. So, I mean, what, if they're operating it long-term as assisted living, I mean, they would have no objection to having it in there, that it has to be, remain assisted living for the life of the project.
Adni Wu, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, there's currently a motion on the floor that was seconded, and then there was a friendly amendment, and so the mover, you chair, will need to accept the friendly amendment, and then the seconder will need to accept that. And then, we can either take a vote, or we can entertain a substitute motion, that's what I recommend, how we proceed at this point.
Yeah, and I believe we did accept the amendment.
So you accepted, the seconder accepted?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so before we take a call for a vote, is there a substitute motion on the floor?
Yeah, I was just gonna, if I could comment, I think that I was going to actually bring up the fact that it seemed like a TDM was something that was probably agreeable, and that that should be memorialized in this, in this motion. I'm gonna vote against it anyway, but, you know, I think that that, you know, keep, that's a part that should be in there.
So, okay, I'll make a substitute motion, if that's okay, then. Okay, so I move that we accept the city's, wait, what was it again? You help me out.
You could offer a friendly amendment.
Thank you, accept the staff recommendation with the amendment that we accept the twenty parking spaces onsite, and that we add a TDM that would, for the staff, for the employee parking, if that's, if that's a requirement we can make. Can I make that requirement?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so that we add a TDM, and I would like to also make a request, I know we can't require this, but I would like to make a request that the retail all be consolidated together, rather than being on opposite ends of the building, so that we're doing a place making next to the retail in building two, so that they're all clustered together. That's my motion.
If I may make a clarifying comment, the twenty spaces that you mentioned as your first bullet point is already included in staff's motion, or is that in addition to...
No.
Okay.
Perhaps one other consideration there would be that the heart of the city has a requirement that the retail space be on the street-facing. I think that perhaps you want to, it might be good to, you know, remove that recommendation, if the place making faces toward the green.
That's a good point. Do I need to do that? Or are we already kind of not following the heart of the city requirements?
I think based on the incentive that they're requesting, you know, they could be located pretty much anywhere.
Okay.
Do we have a second for the substitute motion?
I will happily second that, although...
Okay. Let's vote, and can someone read out the substitute motion? Sorry for you.
That's fine, so as I understood it, Commissioner Linskog moved staff's recommendation when added two conditions, one was to add a...
Oh, sorry, I forgot, sorry, sorry. I do want to also include the, a request to increase the retail to eight thousand, sorry.
Just a request, not a requirement.
Correct.
All right, then I would vote against that.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I clarify, so in the original motion, it was a requirement, and, okay.
No, it was a, it was a request.
Well, I believe the original motion was a request, and I believe the friendly amendment was for a requirement.
Exactly, the friendly amendment was a requirement, right. So that's, I think the big difference is, one is a requirement, one's a request.
Can you read it back?
I did have a clarifying question, did your amendment, your last request, was to not add the additional parking for the added retail also?
Correct.
Okay. With that, the substitute motion is to add a TDM for the employees, I'm assuming to the percentage that the applicant is requesting, request the retail be consolidated near the retail in building two, explore for the possibility of adding additional retail without having to provide additional parking for that retail. Of eight thousand square feet.
Okay, shall we vote? We have a voice vote?
Commissioner Feng?
No.
Commissioner Linskog?
Sorry, we are voting on the substitute motion that he just seconded. Can we, can we pass the vote? This is the motion you seconded.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, can we redo the voice vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Feng?
Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Linskog?
Aye.
Commissioner Shorff?
Uh, no.
Vice Chair Ksolschron?
No.
Chair Rao?
Okay, so the substitute motion fails, two-three, and so we are back to the original motion. I'd like to ask if we can accept a amendment to the amended motion to make the eight thousand square foot retail a request, because I believe we are not in a position to require it, and maybe Adni Wu can comment on the implications of the density bonus incentive here. Would you mind commenting on the ability to make this a requirement versus a request, given the density bonus incentive is a request to reduce it to a certain number?
We don't believe that there is authority in state law to support that.
Okay, so I would like to suggest an amendment, that the condition of approval be as originally suggested on my motion. A request for eight thousand square feet.
So I thought the issue here was a trade-off of reducing the parking from eighty as required currently by the city, in exchange for a requirement to go to eight thousand square foot in retail. But you're saying, it's, I mean, a request is really meaningless, and yes, yes, we know that they could say, okay, we're not gonna build any retail, but then they don't get that parking reduction. So no, I would not, I would not agree to that. I mean...
Okay, so...
I mean, somebody else could amend my motion, amend my amendment, I suppose.
Okay, so, so we have an amended motion that requires eight thousand square feet of retail.
Correct.
And, and I propose that we make that a request for an additional eight thousand square feet, since we cannot require it, it has implications to the...
Right, we cannot require it, but if that, if it turns into a request, then I would remove the reduction in the parking, from eighty spaces to, I forget what the amount is now.
I don't follow your eighty requirement.
Right now, we require eighty residential spaces for the hundred thirty-six units, okay?
The staff recommendation is a total of ninety-three, and we have added twenty offsite parking, so...
I understand, yes.
So the number is a hundred and thirteen.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. But the eighty is not the total number either, the, oh, I closed my spreadsheet, but, yeah, I mean, a request is meaningless for the retail, right? I mean, because they're just gonna say, oh, no, sorry, no. But if it's conditioned on the parking requirement, you know, that might be a different story, and also, I agree with Commissioner Linskog about looking into a reduction in the park fee based on, you know, any increase in retail. You know, we're not that far apart with that park fee, and what they said the underground parking would cost, it's not a huge difference that we're at right now. I mean, you know, this is a hu, yeah, I don't want to say anymore, or I'll say something I regret.
Okay, so I'm not sure, what is the motion on the table right now? And do we have an alternate?
The motion on the table was the, as I believe it, the motion that the chair made with the friendly amendments accepted, and the friendly amendment included the eight thousand square foot retail as a requirement, request that there be a covenant about the assisted living in perpetuity, and a reduction of the current eighty spaces of assisted living down to eleven spaces. I'm gonna recommend that we just start from scratch, because I think there's too many motions, and friendly amendments, and amendments, and amendments, so I just come here and recommend...
recommendation. I do want to point out, though, that under density bonus law, the applicant is entitled to an additional concession, and their concession is they're requesting down to 4,000 square feet of retail, where you to reject that, then you need to come up with some basis that there is, uh, that, that there's, um, you know, that there's, there's, there's negative impact to safety or public safety or health, so you can make, make those findings in order to do that, otherwise you keep it as a, as a request to the applicant.
Okay, very good, so I would like to see if we can arrive at a, at a motion that basically was my original motion with a little bit of adjustment to accommodate the feedback, I think that Commissioner, that some of the Commissioners had, so the original motion was we move the staff recommendation with a request for cation approvals to request an additional 8K, uh, to expand the retail to 8K and to request a TDM for, uh, parking beyond the 93. For the employees.
Could you repeat that last point?
So the conditions of approval are to request the expansion of retail to 8K, to request a TDM for the staff parking, and to explore non-deserved parking for the retail. Sorry, say that again? I would rather not. Because I believe the retailer's, as currently proposed, is closer to senior center, and I believe one of the public commenters did want to have retail at that corner closer to the senior center, I think there's some benefit to that. I would also like to give the applicant the flexibility to work this as best as they can because we want to give them the room to operate here. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. All right, if we might read back the motion and then we should vote.
I have explored the possibility of adding, uh, 4,000 additional square, square feet of retail, uh, but not add parking for that retail, request a TDM for the employee parking, um, for the assisted living portion, those are the two points that I have.
The non, yeah, I think we had, yes, I believe that was it. Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Feng?
No.
Commissioner Linskog?
No.
Commissioner Scharf?
No.
Vice Chair Kasolchron?
Yes.
Chair Rao?
Yes.
The motion fails with Vice Chair Kasolchron and Chair Rao voting yes.
Okay, so I guess we've had two failed motions. Is there another motion on the table? I'm looking at where we will find the. Okay, so I guess not seeing another motion, I'm going to try for moving the staff recommendation with, uh, with no additional change other than maybe a condition of approval to add, to request retail expansion as, as feasible by the applicant. Do I have a second? We could be here all night. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So just to repeat the, the motion, we are moving the staff recommendation with a condition of approval that requests the applicant to explore additional retail, leaving the square footage. Okay, we have a motion and a second, so let's vote.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Linskog?
No.
Commissioner Scharf?
No.
Vice Chair Kasolchron?
No.
Chair Rao?
Aye.
The motion fails with Commissioner Feng and Chair Rao voting yes.
So can we talk about the retail, because it seems like that's the sticking point here for, between, at least three of us, right? So, um, can we discuss the pros and cons of clustering it versus not clustering it? Can you, like, maybe clarify your thinking on that?
Yeah, I want to give the flexibility to the applicant, I mean, this is a request after all because the density bonus incentive allows them to, to effectively get what they're asking for, so anything that we put as a condition of approval is a request, and as a request, I'd like to give them the flexibility to look at their options and see what best they can achieve, because I don't want to constrain them in their design of what they could do, I mean, they may come back with they can do nothing, so this may be a more point.
I also think if we are requesting to increase the retail, then naturally the clustering will sort of happen because we will be adding it.
Okay, so we're trying to move this agenda forward, I know we have staff waiting for the next item as well, so I'm hoping we can get Commissioners here on, on the same page. Are there, are there comments that will help us move this along?
Can I ask our city attorney, what happens if we cannot come to any motion we can pass? Does this just go on to the city council and, and they decide, or what?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to see if the vice chair can share her thinking, since we've had a couple of no votes, maybe you can expand on what you're looking for?
Uh, I actually voted yes on the, um, one of the first few ones that came across, so mine would have been the staff recommendation with the amendment to request additional retail, um, you know, I, I kind of view that we are giving a, a fee, a park fee waiver, and that should be contingent upon something like additional retail, so staff recommendation with requesting additional retail of, for a total of 8,000 square feet, um, we accept the, um...
I don't believe the park in Loufi was waived on that motion.
Was it not?
No.
Okay, well, I would, I would be open to considering that if that helps move this along.
Wait, right now, the staff recommendation is not to have the fee waiver.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
If I could interject, it sounds like maybe the solution would be the staff recommendation with the option that if the retail were to be increased, that then the park dedication fee would be refunded or not paid, it, it, it just sounds like that's where this is headed because that was a request to the applicant, it was not a staff recommendation on the park fees, most of which have already been paid, we were not waiving those.
Am I, can I test for interest in that? Okay, so let's have a, so where were we? So I think we had a failed motion, so we need a new motion. Would you like to make it one?
Okay, so since that wasn't part of the staff recommendation, I guess, um, the motion is to waive the park in Loufi contingent upon additional retail for a total of 8,000 square feet plus a TDM. Did I get that correctly? Okay.
And no additional parking for the retail, increased retail.
Correct, no additional parking necessary for the increase in retail.
I do have one clarifying question, uh, are you proposing to waive the entire parkland dedication fee because they've already paid some portion of it, or is it only for the balance that they owe?
I would like to hear what my fellow Commissioners think, but I would be open to waiving...
I would, I would prefer just the balance.
I would be willing to refund it in addition, in exchange for additional retail.
I think it has to all be on the table because it's $4 million, the remaining balance is only $400,000, they're not gonna build retail for $400,000.
Okay.
Okay, so then the motion would be to refund it contingent upon the addition of retail, of, of 4,000 square feet of retail.
Sorry, do we have staff's attention while we're crafting a motion?
So the, the revision would be to refund the entire park in Loufi contingent upon the addition of 4,000 square feet of retail for a total of 8,000.
With no additional parking.
Correct.
Did we have a second?
Oh, did you put the TDM?
Sorry, was the TDM in that also as well? Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Could staff please read it back before we vote?
So you've moved the staff recommendation with two added conditions of approval, waiving the entire parkland in Loufi, um, for, in exchange for an additional retail of 4,000 square feet for a total of 8,000 square feet with no additional parking requirement for the 4,000 additional square feet, and TDM for the employee, um, for the employees of the assisted living facility.
Okay, if we can do a voice vote, Madam City Clerk?
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Linskog?
Aye.
Commissioner Scharf?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kasolchron?
Aye.
Chair Rao?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously?
Wow.
All right, thank you, I appreciate, uh, our Commission working together in creative ways and moving this along, I apologize to Public Works staff for keeping them waiting as long as we did, we'll take a quick five-minute break while Public Works staff are getting set up for the next agenda item, thank you, and thank you to Related and Oakmont for their time this evening. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the review of the new projects proposed in the fiscal year FY 2526 capital improvement program for consistency with the general plan, if we may start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Chairman Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works, with me tonight is Susan Michael, CIP manager, and she is going to take it away, and we promise to keep this brief.
Okay, I guess you can see my screen, okay? Yes. Good evening Commissioners, thank you for having us, uh, we are gonna keep this brief, tonight's action is to find, uh, the recommended action is to adopt a resolution finding that the fiscal year 2526 capital improvement program is consistent with the city's general plan. We've updated the CIP webpage, there's more features there, including documents that are linked, uh, under, under other resources. The agenda is simply to review for the one project for consistency with the general plan, I wanted to note that the CIP process is part of the conformance, um, to the general plan, that the first policy noted here mandates that the capital improvement program is the vehicle in place to improve the city's infrastructure, and that's followed by the strategy that ensures that CIP projects reflect the general plan. So this was the table that was presented to council when we were floating the new CIP, and there's one new project, there's two projects we're asking for additional funding, and this is the one project. When the Stevens Creek, Calabasas Creek, uh, storm drain, um, outfall, when we had a problem with that last year and we had to do an emergency repair, we also had similar issue, not quite as extreme, with the Vi Avenue, uh, storm drain outfall, pump, Public Works commissioned a report to study all of our city's, uh, storm drain outfalls, and an outfall, just in case anybody doesn't know, it's the last portion of a storm drain when drains to a creek, so that's the part we're talking about, the visible. The report identified 51 outfalls that need repairs, we are requesting 950,000 to address three of these outfalls, and will follow up with requests for additional fundings in the coming years. The other, as I noted, the other two parts of the proposal, uh, for the CIP this year is this additional funding for two existing projects that have been reviewed by planning in previous years, so they were found to be conforming at that time. So, uh, in the next three pages, I just listed the portions of the general plan that seem to, um, support our belief that this project is in conformance with the general plan, um, for example, the goal of waters protect and, um, provide efficient use of our water resources, um, to ensure that the existing facilities are maintained to meet the community's needs, and that this is implementing best practices in stormwater management. And just wanted to note that after this meeting, we go back to council as part of the overall city budget, um, so, and that is it. The action, as I said, is to find that this CIP project is in conformance with the city's general plan.
Thank you, are there any questions, the staff?
I just accept and trust the staff that this is, uh, you know, this is what we should be doing, um, I don't know enough about it to argue at all.
Any other questions? If not, we will go to public comment, I guess, are there any public comments on this item?
We have one speaker in person, Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Um, good evening Planning Commission, I'm glad that I was here to observe, um, everything that was going on, you guys have been pushed to the wall, um, with the previous, it's not the developer's problem, the, the whole concept of developers taking advantage of cities and state law to get what they want is really repulsive to me.
Jennifer, if I may.
Yes, I'm going to speak about it, okay. I want, okay, right now, and one of the problems is Westport, there is a ton of money in the park dedication fee, I want that money spent on buying property, we are trying to get the finished property, um, yes, and I want, I want that park that's down on...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but this, this is public comment on the CIP item.
Lawrence Mitty is one of the projects on CIP, it is. I saw it, I want that park finished, I want park land purchased.
The item that's agenda is, is for this year's CIP.
My understanding is it is CIP, I went to the meeting before, Lawrence Mitty is on the CIP list, I would like to have that property finished, it is a park I worked on, I would like to have the finished property, I want land purchased, I don't know how more to say that, um, I donate to Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space and Post because they buy land, I will be donating more money in the future, and I want my part, my city, to buy parkland, I don't want the housing element to steal it, so yes, I may have spoken out of turn, but I have sat through three hours and I want that property purchased, what more do we have to say? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Madam City Clerk, any other public comments?
We have no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Okay, very good, if there's no more comments, I will move the staff recommendation, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion if anyone has any, any comments. Okay, if not, let's vote.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Linskog?
Aye.
Commissioner Scharf?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kasolchron?
Aye.
Chair Rao?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you to Public Works staff for being patient with us through the evening, appreciate your staying through, and so, uh, the next item on the agenda is staff and Commission reports, do we have any staff reports?
We do not.
Do we have any Commission reports? Okay, hearing none, the next item on the agenda is future agenda setting, any future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, I adjourn the meeting, six minutes past 11, thank you. Thank you.